All right, so we'll call the order to order the Wednesday, January 22nd, 2025 meeting of the Falls Church City Planning Commission. Mr. Trainer, can you do a roll call, please?
Yep. Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Krasner?
I'm here.
Ms. Colmott?
I'm here.
Ms. Friedlander?
Here.
And Mr. Krawinski?
Here.
All right, thank you. We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Stevens will be joining us around 8:00 PM. Mr. Polinsky will be absent tonight. So the next item is number three, adoption of agenda.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, no speaker series. So item five, receipt of petitions. Mr. Trainer, can you, do we have any, first, do we have any speaker slips for tonight?
We do, Chair. We have, well, first, we have no written correspondence for the Planning Commission tonight, but we do have three requesters to address the commission tonight. The first is Gene Gresko.
Great.
We don't have our buzzer, so I'll just keep track of the three minutes back here.
Welcome, Gene.
I'm Gene Gresko, and I live on North Fairfax Street. Last week, you heard how boards and commissions will review their accessory dwelling proposal and submit their comments. I suggest that planning also get insights from the city's zoning staff, who will have to administer any change. They are best able to determine the enforceability of the proposed zoning. Along this line, you also heard that the city recently identified 31 existing accessory structures that could be considered dwellings, were it not for the ill-defined current definition of an AD. Obviously, these 31 have circumvented the intent of what should be considered a dwelling. Planning has worked on a modified AD definition in order to prevent future abuse. This commission should carefully review that definition change. To also prevent unlawful ADs, this commission should institute a prohibition on water and sewage utilities going into accessory structures. It's hard to secretly turn a structure into a dwelling if there isn't running water. Please make this part of the final AD proposal. Thanks for ensuring AD enforcement.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Next is Jennifer Veal.
Welcome.
Oh, make sure your microphone's on. See that green light? Or it'll turn green when it's on. Well, we, for the, yeah.
Be recorded? Do I have to be recorded?
Oh, it's.
I do?
Yeah. The meetings.
I do, okay. Thank you. I have some notes here, but I think I'll just speak extemporaneously. I am not opposed to the proposals that have been made, excuse me, I am opposed to the proposals. I feel that there's a lot of unanswered questions as to why we are going to densify all of Falls Church, when we're just seeing the negative impacts of the recent changes in density, namely adding thousands of units to the city. I think it's impacting the schools apparently already. And I think that while the schools apparently have space for children, they are going to have to make some pretty important decisions as to, do they change class sizes in the future to accommodate more children? Or do they ask for more money? Because something has to give. And, you know, Falls Church cities are golden goose. I also believe that ending single-family housing zoning has consequences. As I just said, it's going to have consequences on the school system. It's going to negatively impact the environment. In areas where I live, for instance, which is West Cameron Road, we are already jockeying for parking spots. And if someone puts up an ADU in the backyard and five or six students live in, and they all happen to have cars, then it's a nightmare for us. I feel zoning is a commitment, and this commitment is, I guess, being broken, of course, you know, we're embracing some kind of reform, but I believe that the citizens are unaware of the real implications. I think many of them are saying, well, I may not do this, but they're not really taking into, they're not taking into account what really happens when the neighbor next door puts in the ADU. So I am, I am opposed to it. I really think it's going to change the character of the city, and which is a very appealing character for many families, this is why they're hankering to live here. I also, do I have, how much time do I have left?
Thirty seconds.
Oh. I think we already have abundant affordable housing, so I think the missing middle is a boondoggle. So again, why are we doing this? I just don't think that that answer, that's a clear answer. And I really worry that the city council is running roughshod over the population. And I hope that we can try to keep them in check. I know the T zones are a disaster, and people left, it left a bad taste in residents' mouths. They felt that they weren't heard, and I feel like this is happening again. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Lastly, we have Robert.
Robert LaGenes, South Virginia Avenue. I am very supportive of accessory dwelling units. I think it's in concert with what's happening around the country, as you know. To add another one to the list, the municipalities in Colorado by this summer have to incorporate ADUs into their zoning and planning regulations. So generally, I think most of the parameters that have been established and suggested are pretty good. I've attended some of the meetings, and the one area that I see a concern is parking. In those meetings, it is never clarified in the questions as to whether we're talking about a new structure or an existing structure. So when it comes for an existing structure, asking them to change the infrastructure for parking would be a big lift. But for a new development, I think you do need to consider something more than just one parking space. Now, most homes, designs and models will already have two garages, or a two-car garage and a parking driveway as well. However, there are houses, particularly on my cul-de-sac, that are built, extremely large houses, with one parking spot. And you can imagine if there were additional residents in that home, how much additional parking there would be on the street. And that effectively creates a negative externality for myself and others who are subsidizing that parking. So when it comes to new development, if there's some way you can differentiate between a new development project and existing, you know, sort of a redevelopment of existing, I think you could bump up that parking requirement to two spaces. Another consideration would be in cul-de-sacs. I live on a cul-de-sac, so it's a particular pinch point to add cars onto that street. So perhaps new development in a cul-de-sac could be required, or if you're within 200 feet of a cul-de-sac, it should be required that you have a minimum of two parking spots. Again, it's not going to impact the average home model, right? But the purpose of zoning codes and minimum standards is so that you elevate the one person in the city, or a few people in the city who want to come along, build a house with only one parking spot that's off-street, and imposes a burden or a negative externality on the neighbors. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. Any other, no other speaker slips tonight, no other in-person petitions?
That's it, Chair.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to item six, our action items. Six A is appointment of liaisons. Mr. Fuller, are you introducing this?
I will introduce this, yes.
Thank you.
This item comes before you every year at this time, and we discuss making appointments to the board and commissions as liaisons from the planning commission. This, we're working on the 2025 calendar year. We've listed a table on line 17 that indicates your 2024 PC liaisons, as we had last year. Of course, you have two brand-new planning commissioners and one recent with Commissioner Duncan. And so we ask you tonight to discuss your assignments for this, and we will record that and have this typed up. And I appreciate Jack Trainer for pulling this together for us. So I'll turn this over to the Chair at this point. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you for putting this together and including the meeting dates, important information. I know Mr. Polinsky is absent, Mr. Stevens is absent. He may join us during this discussion, but I do have some of his input on his preferences. Mr. Polinsky is coming to us from the AAB, and so he would be happy to serve as that liaison, and Mr. Stevens is happy to pass that duty along to Mr. Polinsky. So I think we could probably go ahead and make that change. Mr. Stevens said he'd also be happy to pass along Arts and Humanities Council. He is interested, I believe, in continuing as the ESC liaison. He's currently the backup to me. I have some trouble making their Thursday meetings, so we might want to switch those. And then, I'm just reporting what I know so far, and then the group should discuss. Mr. Stevens is interested in being, I think, maybe one of the two liaisons to EDA and So that is all I know at the moment. Any other thoughts from the commission?
Just, my only thought is I'm pretty flexible in terms of my assignment. I think I am filling Mr. Puente's slot, his vacancies, so if that works for everybody, I'm happy to continue with the positions that he had, the assignments that he had, the Starkle Commission, the Starkle Architectural Review Board, and there was one other, oh, the Human Services and Advisory Council. Again, not hard over on any of those, so if somebody wants to jump on those, I can switch it up.
Any interest from others on the commission in HARB or the Historical Architectural, I'm sorry, HARB or the Historical Commission?
I, I mean, I've been serving as a backup for Mr. Stevens. I mean, for me, obviously, I have some challenges on certain evenings with other commitments, but I did HARB several years ago, and so I'm happy to go back and, you know, do that. They don't meet as often as some of the other groups, so it's a little bit easier for me to, you know, cover them. So I could, I could do that.
HARB would be good for you. What about Historical Commission or just HARB?
I mean, either. I mean, yeah, they're kind of meeting at the same time, right? They're kind of the same, right?
Oh, you're right.
Yeah. But I think they're like related, all right? I don't know, I forget. They're like, is there any overlap with numbers of those? Maybe I'm confusing it with something else. But, yeah, they meet at the same time, so I don't know. I think in the past, I did HARB, I didn't do the Historical Commission, but I'm not as familiar with them and exactly how often they meet and what the commitment is. But, so, yeah, but I'm open to, you know, I can help him to share the, spread the load around.
Great.
And also for, I mean, for our new members, I mean, I think it's important to stress that we're a liaison, we're not a member of these boards, so, I mean, I know, obviously we all feel pressure to try to, you know, stay on top of it and attend their meetings as often as we can, but, you know, you're not there to fill a quorum or anything else, so sometimes if you can't make it, it's, you know, you try to at least know what their agenda was and find out what happened and report back, so there is some flexibility there, just for the new members, if they're wondering like what the commitment is. So anyhow, yeah, but I'd be happy to go back to HARB and whatever else, if I could manage it and people, you know, there's an opening, I'm happy to help.
That sounds great. Thank you, Mr. Krasner. We have your name down for HARB. Staff, do you, Jack or Gary, do you have any insight as to whether HARB and Historical Commission, do they meet concurrently, like, or are they?
They are, they meet concurrently. For instance, tomorrow night is their typical meeting night for the month, and they both meet at the same time, they're utilizing.
In two different spaces?
I think they meet together.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, they meet together, and then they're staffed by one of our planners, Cameron Garrus.
Okay. I need to attend one of their meetings, I haven't done that yet.
Anyway, so they were having a problem having quorums, so I think they combined the two groups.
Yeah, I think that's what, now, see, now my memory's getting fuzzy, but I remember in the past that, right, they're like, they're not the same legally, like HARB, I think, has some things under the ordinance that they're required to do, whereas the commission is more purely like advisory and matters related to the history of the city, so, but they're like, right, so they're like related, yeah. So bottom line is, I could do both.
Okay.
So it's probably the fourth Thursdays of the month that they would meet, because they're meeting tomorrow night, for example.
Right, yep.
They frequently do not meet, so I would say the commitment's probably about six meetings out of the twelve.
Yeah, that's what I recall in the past, and I'm happy to do it again. It fits with my schedule, you know, so.
That's helpful, thank you. Okay, and then I think we had an offer from Mr. Krawinski for each SAC, Human Services Advisory Council, and then I wanted to ask you, Mr. Krawinski, I know you're coming to us from the Housing Commission. We also lost Mr. Hyra, so I'm wondering if you might be interested in serving as the lead on Housing Commission liaison?
Sure.
Or would you prefer to sort of learn about other boards and commissions? Because that's also an approach, and we're open to.
If there's a need for housing, it's a good group of folks doing a lot of great stuff, so I have no problem continuing as their liaison.
Okay. That's great, thank you. The other change that I know of, I think, is maybe a switch for me to be the backup for ESC and Mr. Stevens to be the primary liaison, unless others are interested in ESC, and then I guess I would, I want to hear from you, Ms. Friedlander, sorry.
No, that's good, thank you. The ones that I'm serving on are on the screen.
Are on the page, yeah.
Yeah, so it looks like I'm not representing, but, but no, I actually, those two commissions, or board and commission, work very well with my schedule, and I enjoy both of those, so I'm more than happy to stay on with those.
Great, okay, good to hear, thank you.
So what do we got left?
We have EDA, EDC, perhaps?
Is Mr. Stevens?
Are we switching these two, Chair?
Yeah, if you, if you can make, Mr. Stevens, I think, would be the primary there. This is sort of the current reality.
Okay.
So I think we're just reflecting, and hopefully he'll arrive soon and can confirm. But I think, I think Mr. Stevens is interested in still.
So Tim wants to be the top guy on EDA, the backup spot is right now, Brent, I could do that if he doesn't want to come to a meeting at seven o'clock on a Tuesday.
Mr. Krasner, any thoughts?
For being, for remaining as the backup or filling in full-time, I'm sorry, I missed the.
Are you interested in continuing as the backup for EDA or EDC?
Oh, I can definitely be the backup, yeah. I mean, it's a big, the daytime stuff is tough, but I think you can log in, can you still log in remotely to EDC?
I think, I think Mr. Duncan is interested in being the backup, if you're, if you're willing to give it up.
Oh, I see.
I think is the proposal.
I can give it up, yeah. I mean, because the 9:00 AM stuff was always tough anyway. Mr. Stevens was pretty good about making it, actually, so.
Yeah.
I kind of didn't have to do much for that, but, you know, and that's fine. I mean, I did get the emails, which I actually found quite interesting, to get their agendas. I mean, the EDA, I mean, even that is helpful, but, but yeah, I'm happy to let Mr. Duncan, he has more time than me, I think, during the mornings on Thursdays.
Let's not, let's not put too much money on that.
Maybe not.
So.
So that's, that's EDC.
We're talking about the Economic Development Committee, EDC, which normally meets in the modern era on Tuesdays at one o'clock in the afternoon.
That was the group you used to chair when you were in Cal.
Right, in my years, and I think Vice Mayor Hiscott has kept that time slot, so I think it's Tuesday afternoons, which generally I can make without any trouble. Why don't, why don't you be the backup for the EDA and I'll be the backup for the EDC?
Okay.
And then that leaves us with.
I, I'm happy to.
CACT, are you going to stay on that?
Yeah, I'm happy to continue for CACT. So I think the one that is potentially open to whoever on the commission would be interested is the Arts and Humanities Council.
Yeah.
That's the second Wednesday, which actually is the same as CACT, so I couldn't, oh, I'm sorry.
Arts Humanities is Thursday morning.
Third Thursday.
And it's the Thursday, it's the same week that.
Oh, it's in the morning, yeah.
Same, it's the same week the Planning Commission meets until.
I can't do the.
Eleven o'clock the night before.
Yeah, I can't, I can't do the daytime. So that meeting time is tough, I think, for most of us who are.
That would never be.
Okay. I think that's been the case for Mr. Stevens, it's been difficult to make it, so maybe we just keep that status quo, and we can confirm with him. Does this look okay to everyone?
Who ended up with the Housing Commission?
Mr. Krawinski, Housing Commission.
Okay.
Is that?
And you're the backup.
I'm happy for you to be the backup, Mr. Duncan.
No, that's all right, I'm just making sure.
No, I, it would be great if you would, if you would be willing to be the backup for housing.
I, I sometimes will call into their meetings, but generally have not been able to attend for the last some stretch of time.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Changes? Good?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And of course, everybody is welcome to go to any of these boards and commissions, but, yeah. All right. Thank you all.
So staff will finalize the changes and will include it in your next package, and then if for some reason you need to revisit it, you know, we can also do it then, so.
That sounds good. And then Mr. Stevens and Mr. Polinsky will be with us, and maybe they can confirm that this looks good to them.
Okay, we'll, thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks for pulling it together. Okay, so that moves us on to item 7A, work session items, rules of procedure and remote participation policy.
All right, I'll introduce this item as well. And once again, thank you for, Jack, putting this together. The group has a rules procedure that staff is recommending that you, you know, review this as we do annually. There's also been an update to the state regulations for the public body remote participation requirements, and they're detailed in the staff report. Basically, we had last adopted a remote participation policy in May of '23, and in July of '24, the state updated the remote participation, authorizing some new policies for public bodies, and this requires the commission to adopt, you know, an updated remote policy that reflects these updates. And the updates included a new requirement for public bodies to formally adopt a remote policy every year, so it's before you. And secondly, there was an allowance for remote participation to count towards the meeting quorum. This specifically, though, applies to persons with disabilities or caregiver, and so there's the definitions provided here as for those situations where there is an allowance for remote counting towards the meeting quorum itself, so that's the difference in the quorum meeting. Anyway, so the rules of procedure, staff does not have any recommended changes, changes to that, but, you know, you may want to visit that and review and suggest any changes that you might want to make. We'll review these every year, and so, anyway, the rules of procedure are before you, and then we're also asking them to act on the pre-adoption of the remote as well, so. Okay, just, so the action would be adopting both, both of these, so we would adopt the rules of procedure as presented, unless you amend them and revise them, and the remote policy as well. So, thank you. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. We have it listed as a work session item, so are you looking to adopt it at our next meeting?
We would adopt it the next meeting, yeah.
Okay, so it's just discussion tonight?
Right.
Okay.
At this point, we're getting the input.
Yeah, for this meeting, we're getting the input, and then we would adopt it the next meeting.
At the next, okay.
You know, this is our administrative meeting for the year.
Great. So no staff recommendations on changes to the rules of procedure and a remote participation policy kind of update that we would need to adopt? Any thoughts from the commission? Did anybody look at the rules of procedure and see something that they wanted to change? We made some changes last year.
Yeah, I noticed you updated.
Any thoughts on the proposed remote participation policy, any changes that you would make? And I believe this is coming from the, from the state, is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
There's new language that was issued from the state, so.
Yeah.
We should, we should be in sync with that. It makes it, you know, as was explained, it's kind of, you know, common sense, so.
Okay. Any discussion on either item then? No? Looks good to us?
All right, we will include this in the next package for action, then, as is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that takes us into our second work session item, the accessory dwelling update. Mr. Fuller, are you?
Yes, I will introduce this item. So ordinance TO 24-17 to amend zoning chapter for accessory dwellings to be permitted in R1A, R1B, and RM districts, and to allow detached accessory dwellings and to amend the code references to utility chapters in connections with accessory dwellings. So this is a work session, and we were, you know, requesting you to continue to look at this. We discussed it in some minor ways last week at the end of our listening session, so this was meant to be your full work session on it. In terms of updates, Jack was able to make a number of updates, which he'll highlight based on your comments from the meeting a week ago. And so, and then there's some pending items, of course, still, and so he will also highlight those. From a scheduling standpoint, the recommendation request from city council is by March 21st. However, we have a schedule of bringing this back to you for final consideration and action on March 5th, and that allows your recommendations to inform the city council work session scheduled the following week on March 10th. And so then their final action is scheduled for March 24th. So as the current schedule is, we're looking at a final public hearing advertised and recommendation to council on March 5th, so in terms of scheduling. So I'm going to turn this over to Jack Trainer, the project planner on this. Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Mr. Fuller. Good evening, Planning Commission. Yes, this is another work session on accessory dwellings. Planning Commission has had two work sessions since the first reading, two certain proposed amendments to the city's zoning ordinance were granted by city council back in November 25th, 2024. The Planning Commission is recommended to make its recommendation to city council by March 21st, 2025. As Mr. Fuller mentioned, there are several updates to this report and the proposal that I'm going to cover, and again, the recommendation tonight is to hold a work session and provide staff some, some feedback on, on those updates. The Planning Commission has one more scheduled work session in February, and so this, this is a good time to obviously hold, hold a substantive work session ahead of that kind of final markup session, and I'll cover, again, the meeting schedule towards the end of my presentation. But to go into what some of the updates are to the staff report, we've collected kind of the majority of them. of the majority of them in this table. Updates since first reading. We've provided a, an amended definition to define an accessory dwelling that's kind of centered around both the intent of its use as habitation use and, and also listing some of those physical contents, including at least one bathroom and one kitchen. Again, this is kind of an attempt to capture some of the, you know, accessory structures that for all intents and purposes are accessory dwellings, but skirt just kind of under the current definition, which is very descriptive of, of the contents in it. So the new definition is sort of a mix of both, again, the, the intent and some of the contents inside, which again includes at least one, one bathroom and one kitchen. That full definition is included in the draft code towards the bottom of this report. I'm not gonna go down there in my presentation, but, you know, happy to, to navigate down there for the discussion. And a maximum occupancy of, of three persons is, is being proposed. This is kind of born out of additional conversations with the building official and zoning administrator, and I'll touch a little bit more on that in a moment. Windows in detached accessory dwellings facing neighboring lots. This, this is something that was included in previous iterations and was removed, but I think is, is something that has been brought up in some of the open house meetings and public comment we've received as being a benefit to the privacy of neighboring lots. And so what, what this requirement is, is, is that for detached accessory dwellings with windows above the first, the first story, that portion or wall with those windows above the first story would be required to be set back at least 10 feet from the nearest lot lines. Again, that's just for the, the window portion. And then lastly, structural additions of existing non-conforming buildings as the subject. So the draft code has been modified. Some of the phrasing and some of the existing code has been clarified that existing non-conforming structures would not be permitted to expand their footprint, but would still be permitted to, be converted to accessory dwellings. And, and again, that would be a conditional use, so through the special use permit process. Additional questions raised and discussions since first reading? These are some topic, you know, points that have come up in, in, in work sessions. Most of these are resolved. So the topic of question and then staff's response, it was requested last time that a kind of review of industry standard accessory dwellings be included. That information has been included in this report, including a information from Seattle, which has a 1,000 square foot accessory dwelling maximum, and then some, several examples from Arlington County. We're continuing to gather data from Alexandria and Fairfax, and so those, those numbers will be included in, in future reports. We unfortunately couldn't get all that information with the tight turnaround time for this meeting, but some of those will, will be added to that section of, of the report. Consideration for substandard lots, we've included a section in this report going over those requirements and how the current proposal would interact with those existing regulations. I'll cover those. A bulk plane analysis for proposed amendments. So this is something I, I think staff, the proposal would benefit discussion from, but this, this kind of pertains to the setback in height requirements for detached accessory dwellings. And so we've included what's called a bulk plane or the sort of plane from, you know, how you measure the height of a structure based on how far setback it is and looking at the kind of interaction between the, you know, from the pedestrian level, the setback in height requirements. And so later on in, in this presentation, I'll kind of walk through what those look like in the current proposal and maybe kind of clarify a little bit more how the discussion, you know, could be, could be substantive for that, for those topics. Some of these other things, you know, have, have been included in the last report, clarifying, you know, parking in the front yard, they have to be in designated driveways for the zoning ordinance. Separate addressing is something that the EDA brought up, and after discussing this, particularly with the building official, he advised that basically accessory dwellings with their, with a separate address would trigger separate utility requirements. And of course, we've amended the draft code to expressly allow accessory dwellings to share utilities with the principal dwelling because of the cost that that could result in. So requiring accessory dwellings to have their own utilities could add, you know, several tens of thousands of dollars to the project. And so if requiring a separate address for the accessory dwelling would trigger those requirements, staff's recommendation is to not require accessory dwellings to have their own address. Some follow-up questions that I have scheduled for the building official is sort of what, is, is that possibility still open to accessory dwelling? So for instance, if someone did want to have a separate address, kind of what would that look like? And so that's some additional information that we'll follow up with. This, so what is the Planning Commission's role in reviewing accessory dwelling special use permit applications? This question was raised, I think, a couple work sessions ago, but there hasn't been kind of discussion. I just wanna flag that in the draft code, staff is proposing that special use permit considerations only go to the BZA in order to streamline that process. Again, having standards set in place and offering some consistency in sort of removing one step from that process, they would still undergo on a case-by-case basis, you know, that, that extra review. But the proposal is to kind of have the Board of Zoning Appeals review special use permits for accessory dwellings only.
Can I ask real quick, does that also apply to the internal RM special use permits?
Yeah, it would, it would apply to all accessory dwelling-related special use permit The owner occupancy requirement, this is something I know the Planning Commission has asked about. This is still under review with city staff. You know, again, kind of sorry for the delay there. We'll get you a, a kind of response on this issue, you know, as soon as we can, but I know that that is of concern. And again, affordable housing considerations are, are not specifically part of, of this proposal, which was another question raised previously. But moving on to some of the other kind of new information in this report. The current proposal is still to keep those existing lock coverage standards in place. There's no information here, just some clarifying information about when those coverages are reviewed and checked. So building and impervious surface coverage are checked at time of certificate of occupancy for zoning, but the tree canopy coverage minimum is checked at time of grading plan. So occupancy limits. So again, staff is proposing a maximum of three persons to inhabit the accessory dwelling. This is based on, again, some kind of additional clarifying conversations had with the zoning administrator and, and building official. So right now, the, the zoning ordinance defines one family as potentially being up to eight unrelated persons, not related by blood, marriage, or adoption, living together as a single housekeeping unit. This could theoretically, you know, apply to accessory dwellings without some additional protections. And so if you do have a kind of smaller unit, it might not be, you know, safe to have obviously eight people in there. And also the questions of sort of reinforcing the subordinate status of an accessory dwelling compared to the principal dwelling. Three persons, you know, retains that flexibility to house smaller households and still kind of reinforces that accessory dwelling subordinate status. The building code also has some language around occupancy, but that's kind of more geared towards bedroom standards. And so, for instance, like a bedroom has to have, I think, 50 feet per person lit, like occupying that bedroom. And so thinking about some, some more sort of hypotheticals, if, you know, all, all other things remain the same and the accessory dwelling had, for instance, the same number of bedrooms as the principal dwelling, it might raise some, some questions, you know, about the subordinacy status. And so, so for some of those kind of additional considerations, staff's proposing the three-person kind of maximum habitation for accessory dwellings.
Mr. Trainer, sorry to interrupt you on that. I, I know I had raised that question too about the definition of family that we have in the ordinance. I mean, I, I suspect, I don't know this for a fact, but, I mean, I think I asked this question sort of where, where that definition of family came from. You know, eight unrelated people is a large number. My suspicion is it has something to do with, it may be a very old definition that predates the definition of a group home in Virginia is eight people unrelated. Group homes since the late 1990s have been protected by Federal Fair, the Federal Fair Housing Act. They're also protected by state code for people who are disabled, who are, who are physically or mentally disabled. And I think this may have predated that when we, or we were trying somehow to dovetail with that. I just think that, to me, if we're looking at all these things, I mean, that definition maybe should be looked at. I don't know how often that's come up, but right now, you know, you could have a single-family house and eight unrelated people living there. And in my opinion, eight unrelated people sharing, you know, a home starts to tilt the balance beyond, you know, what a typical definition of family is. And so, like I said, other jurisdictions around Virginia, you know, define family differently, you know? I mean, there'd be a way, there are ways to define it by saying, you know, the fa- a family is this many unrelated people, you know, or any number who are related by blood or marriage, this number of people who are unrelated, and group homes. Because group homes are defined by Virginia state code. And so it might be a way to avoid an unintended consequence. I don't know how often it's come up. I was actually pretty surprised when I first saw that we defined it that way, but then when I started thinking about it-
Right.
That's why I think the number eight was picked. But there's no reason today to, I don't know why we do that, because it's basically saying that, you know, people who wouldn't meet the definition of group home could still live together, up to eight, which, you know, could be, I don't know, problematic, even forgetting the discussion about ADUs. So, and I don't know, you know, what other folks think about that, but it, to me, it's, I don't know, it's something that is kind of like a loophole in our ordinance that, you know, could have an unintended consequence. But in any event, so, but I'm glad to see that you've responded to, you know, because I raised that question that we need to, you know, for the purposes of an accessory dwelling unit, put some limits on that, so. And we can talk about whether three is the right number or not, but I was, I'm glad to see you've responded to that. But just, you know, other comments on the definition of family since we're looking at that? Thanks.
Let's see. So I'm gonna be zooming in and out, I think. We'll try to talk to IT about this setup a little bit. Again, the other, another update reflected here is windows facing adjacent lots above the first story would be required to be set back 10 feet from the property line. So moving into the staff analysis section is sort of where most of the kind of new information is. Staff's included the results of another GIS analysis looking at existing accessory structures in the R1A and R1B districts, and, and found that, you know, there are approximately, you know, 1,500 existing accessory structures in these two zoning districts. And the average footprint of these was 248 square feet. And the smallest, 75% of these accessory, again, these existing accessory building footprints were under 326 square feet. So unlikely to be large enough to, to hold an accessory dwelling, but the, the largest, you know, 25% would get closer to that. And here's the kind of industry standard accessory dwelling size in terms of total square feet. We've included a chart here from previous staff reports bringing in those requirements or, or how size is regulated in Arlington, Alexandria, and Fairfax. Each jurisdiction kind of has a different way of doing it, either through, you know, footprint sizes or, you know, total floor area or, or a combination of both. There's a couple of different ways to think about it. So any feedback on kind of these measures versus what's proposed would be helpful. And again, we've included, you know, some, some information here about those, what kind of sizes actually get built. Seattle has a really comprehensive survey program that they do every year on their accessory dwellings. So in 2019, Seattle kind of updated their regulations to permit a maximum size of 1,000 square feet. And in their 2022 accessory dwelling annual report, they reported that the average size of 259 attached accessory dwellings was 724 square feet, and the average size of 369 detached accessory dwellings was 702 square feet. And again, looking at 14 built accessory dwellings in Arlington, staff found that the average gross floor area was 657 square feet. Again, we're, we're continuing to get more data from Fairfax and Alexandria, so we can, we'll include that information in here once, once we get that data. So for height and setbacks now, I know this, this came up, well, it's come up at every meeting, but particularly last work session, I think, is recognized that this is something that, you know, might warrant some, some specific discussion. And so again, we've, we've included several things here. One is, again, this table looking at those regulations in Arlington, Alexandria, and Fairfax for the setback in heights. And then also included here are the, those requirements, those setback in height requirements, and then the setback to height ratio for accessory buildings today, things like sheds and garages, and then single-family homes in the R1A and R1B district, and then comparing those what's, with what's proposed. So you'll notice that in the R1B district, the, well, let me, let me get down to, so here's the kind of bulk plane sort of diagrams that I was talking about, and I wanna shout out Cameron Gares for these. I think he did a good job. And this is, you know, I, I think could be a good tool to sort of help frame this conversation. So what we're looking at here are the proposed setback and height requirements for detached accessory dwellings, and sort of how the current proposal would slot in with the current regulations in R1A and R1B. The points here are the midline to the roof, which is how, you know, heights are, are measured. And so in green, we have the setback of three feet and a height of 12 regulations for accessory buildings, like a shed. The middle one is the detached accessory dwelling of, here it's five feet and 20 feet, five foot setback from the property line, 20 feet to the midline. And then the- And then the single-family home is setback 10 feet and 35 to the roof line in R1B, and then 15 feet setback and 35 to the roof line in R1A. So, you'll notice here that the ratio, or, you know, what's kind of called the bulk plane, right? In R1B, this slots right in with that setback to height ratio of .25. That's exactly the ratio for accessory buildings today. And then the ratio for R1B is .29, but you'll see that it's, this remains pretty consistent with what those regulations are today in the R1B district. But those same regulations in R1A, again, nothing's changed with the accessory building and the five-foot, 20-foot height regulations for the accessory dwelling. These obviously stay consistent, but the condition that changes is for the single-family home, which kind of throws off that consistency. But in the R1A district, it's sort of the opposite story where this is the 10-foot setback, 25-foot height regulation to the midline. You'll see that, you know, now you're less consistent with the regulations for the accessory building today, but you're a little more in line with, oh, sorry, this is R1B. So, right, excuse me. The consistency remains in R1B for the accessory building and the single-family home, but the inconsistency now is with the 10-foot setback and the 25-foot height is sort of off with the current regulations in R1B. But in R1A, where there's a larger required setback for the single-family home, it goes to 15 feet, your ratio is more in the .4s or .3, .43. And so, the 10-foot setback and the 25-foot height matches the kind of regulations for the single-family home better in the R1A district. And then in R1B, the five-foot, five-foot setback, 20-foot height kind of matches those with R1B a little bit more. So, I think, you know, the proposal is sort of based around, again, kind of regulating accessory dwellings the same way that other buildings are regulated in these two districts. And that's, you know, what these kind of models are trying to show. And I think what would be helpful in talking about the setback in heights is whether, you know, keeping that same consistency in these districts and those current regulations makes the most sense, or if some other sort of standard should be discussed. The other thing I'll say is that having both of these options for both districts, you know, obviously offers the property owner the most flexibility. But one consideration might be breaking these up or even assigning different setback in height pairs for the separate districts in order to maybe match the existing kind of building conditions while, again, kind of retaining some flexibility because the detached form is not permitted today. So, I think having this conversation sort of in that vein would be really helpful in terms of any adjustments that may need to be made ahead of the next work session.
I mean, yeah, I'm trying to follow you on that discussion. Do we have a bulk plane regulation now in the ordinance? No, we don't, right? Do we have a bulk plane? We don't.
I don't believe so. It's a setback in.
We just have setback to height, yeah. I would just, again, I mean, I guess I understand the, sort of, the analysis, what we're trying to show, but are you suggesting that we would add a bulk plane requirement? That that's how we would regulate height now? Or, I just, I'm trying to follow what you were saying. Was that just for the sake of the analysis? Or are you?
Just for the analysis. So, just trying to be representative of the current conditions and how the proposal fits in to those current conditions. And so, I think, I'm trying to frame the conversation around, should accessory dwellings be regulated the same way as current buildings? Or if we're going to talk about setback, different setback in height requirements that, you know, aren't consistent with current conditions?
Right. No, I get you. I think, I mean, it assumes that, I mean, not you personally, but it is assuming that the way we do it now is right and correct and works, and that's something we should discuss too. I mean, you know, allowing things as close as three feet, you know, up to 12 feet tall is, you know, for sheds and things without any, is actually kind of close, in my opinion. But anyhow, we should talk about that because it just assumes that we're doing it right today and, you know, I don't think anyone here needs to feel that we, you know, accept that because we're looking at it, you know, to change it potentially. So, you know, I don't, again, I don't know how long it's been like that and what the genesis of that was, but, yeah, but I, okay. You answered my question as far as what your, the analysis is, but.
Can I know one thing, Jack? Just because it confused me. On the next pair, I think the label is wrong. It should be 10-foot setback, 25-foot height for both?
Yes.
25. 10's 25 for both, right?
Correct.
Because we have.
Yep. Good catch.
Thank you.
For accessory structures, we also measure to the midpoint?
Yeah.
Okay. No matter the pitch of the roof. All right. I don't know if I realized that. I know we did it for the principal structures, but also something people should think about because depending on how steep your roof is, the midpoint, the midpoint can allow something that's much taller, you know, for, I'm not an architect, but I know that much. So, anyhow, we should also talk about that. Thanks.
So, yeah, I hope this is helpful in sort of framing that conversation. So, okay, substandard lots, we've also included a sort of section here breaking down what those current requirements are for substandard lots. There's sort of three kind of considerations, and we've included, you know, some numbers to be representative of what the effect would be, again, sort of under the current proposal. If it's helpful, I can walk through those, or if that's something we want to come back to for the sake of time, I can keep going.
I think there will be some discussion on this. I did have, I have one clarifying question on line, at line 293.
Okay.
The way I read this is that the rear yard could not be less than 20 feet, but the sort of staff analysis below that says that less than 20 feet is okay, whereas I think the code is saying you can't go less than 20 feet. Am I?
Right. Well, right, because the current proposal for like a rear yard for accessory dwelling is less than 10 feet, or less than 20 feet already. So, the, there would be no, nothing to reduce it to because it's saying for a substandard lot, however much it's reduced, it ends up being not less than 20 feet to the rear yard. And the current proposal's 10 feet. So, because that's already less than 20 feet, there would be no effect.
See, I read this as like, you have to have a 20-foot minimum rear yard.
Oh, okay.
Am I misinterpreting that? Is that how my other?
The zoning administrator didn't?
Okay.
Flag, I ran this all by the zoning administrator.
Yeah, okay. I would just ask, like, can we?
We can double-check that.
And I guess the proposal here, and maybe we can save this for more discussion, but is to sort of regulate accessory dwellings for substandard lots similarly to how primary structures would be regulated? That's sort of the vibe I got from this section?
Right.
Okay. That's the staff recommendation. Yeah, I think maybe if you could proceed and we can come back to this for more discussion.
Sure.
Because that would be sort of a different approach from the other zoning districts. So, I think that merits some discussion from the group.
And then, maybe we were going to just get to this. And then the height thing that you're starting on line 298, where you're proposing that for substandard lots, there would be like a commensurate?
Reduction.
Reduction to the maximum height for the setback. Okay, this is all new, Greg? This is all?
Yeah.
This is all, this is all new. I mean, yeah, so this is just applying the same standards that would be applied to a single-family home in a substandard lot to those requirements for a detached accessory dwelling under the current proposal.
And these reductions in height, that's based on the area of the lot. It's not based on the other thing. It's not, we're not saying that's based on the bulk plane that we were just looking at. You're saying just, you're limited immediately. So, for, it's actually, this is kind of confusing. For R1B, 6,000-square-foot lot, which is kind of like where I live, 16-foot is now the limit. You can't go to 20, no matter what.
Right. It's based on.
No matter how far back you put it.
No, that's just for the five-foot setback requirement. So, for the 10-foot, you could be taller.
No, I'm sorry. You can go to 20.
Right.
If you meet 10.
Yeah.
So, again, we've picked, you know, some numbers to, as examples, but, yeah, the height reduction's based on the ratio of, again, how substandard the lot is in area multiplied by what the allowable height is. And so, either 20 or 25 feet.
All right.
I think that is it for kind of the new information included here. You know, we included a blurb about the open house meetings in January, and those results have been compiled as attachments, those open-ended, that the answers to the kind of text box And then, so I'll just wrap up with the schedule ahead. So, again, following tonight's work session, city council has a scheduled work session on Monday, January 27th. The planning commission has its final work session scheduled for February 19th with a public hearing scheduled for March 5th. City council's final work session is scheduled for March 10th. And currently, city council's final consideration is scheduled for March 24th. So, I know that's a lot of information.
Yeah. A birthday on March 24th. That's a weird omen, I think.
Your work will be done, hopefully.
Yeah. Okay, sorry.
I'll turn it back to you, Chair. Thanks.
Great. Thank you so much for that thorough report. Thank you for all the additional information that you added in a very short time period, too. Really appreciate all of the effort that you.
Friday was a late night. Yeah.
Yeah. I was getting some late emails from you. I really appreciate all the effort that staff has put in into gathering the information and experiences of other neighboring jurisdictions and their standards. It's really helpful. And the bulk plane analysis, please thank Mr. Garris. I found that very helpful, and I think it's a really good way to think about it personally, but I think that merits discussion from the group. So, what is everyone's preference on how to proceed? Do we want to go through the staff report? Are there particular areas that you want to look at?
Can I ask a couple of questions first?
Yes, please, Ms. Friedlander.
Just to kind of start with questions and then, if I went going through, like, we had four hot-button?
Issues.
Issues that we knew were going to be longer discussion points than the others. So, I'm okay with going through those one by one. But I just, quick questions. Just generally speaking, I was going through all the public comments that came through, and is there, I noticed that there's a large percentage that didn't have addresses associated with them until today, right? Then there were a few that were clearly like resident addresses. So, I was curious, you know, and just wondering if there's a requirement for that. I mean, it's important to listen to public feedback, but I think it's also, you know, and just doing a couple of quick Google searches on some of those names, some places of employment showed up that were like at least four or five hours driving distance from here. And so, I thought, well, it shouldn't matter that somebody doesn't physically live here if they have an interest or a property ownership here, and I think that's all important. But I also think it's important that we think about that through that lens, that there is a desire for creating investment, real estate investment opportunity. And I think we have to think about that in terms of the fabric of our neighborhoods and what the comprehensive plan kind of dictates for our residential areas. And so, I was kind of curious about whether or not there's, I think I answered my own question, right? In that it's, you don't have to be a resident to comment, but I think it's important when you are a resident to state that you're a resident or your address or something like that. But I also think it's important for us to think about some of those comments through those lenses because not necessarily everybody who lives here is looking for a real estate investment, which becomes then a commercial industry in our residential areas. So, sorry, I answered my own question in talking through that. Sorry about that. But I did have another question about, I really appreciated you including the presentation that you gave for those of us who weren't able to be there in the January 14th. And I started really looking at this projection snapshot that talks about the lots that have the ability to develop anything over 500 square feet to more than 1,500. And I was curious about the analysis of how many of those lots are R1A versus R1B? So, I kind of did like a quick overlay to kind of see what that looks like. But it would be good to have, like, to understand of that 56%, which is more than half of our residential zoned areas, have the ability to do this. But it would be good to understand which ones are the R1A versus R1B because the R1A is a little bit lower density, at least. So, that was one question I had. And then the other was about the substandard lots, like, how, what's the quantity or percentage of those? Like, how often do the substandard lots creep up? Because I'm wondering if we're just creating something for very few lots. Like, I don't know if it's a lot of the lots are substandard. It would be important information to have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other first questions right off the bat? No?
I did want to just say something about the owner occupancy requirement. I mean, I understand, we asked, that was one of our four hot topics. And I understand staff hasn't had a chance to get the legal review of that, and I understand that's in the works. But it's really important to me that that reference to owner occupancy requirements is developed in tandem with this policy. And it, for me, it's a nonstarter if we develop a policy without it. So, I just wanted to make that known. And, you know, in the interest of trying to help move these things forward, I really appreciated you bringing in all of the other work session information because it wasn't there when we had our December 4th work session that I was like, we've done so much work on this. How come it's not showing up? So, thank you. It was really helpful to kind of see that development and kind of see some of that data come back. So, that was really helpful. So, thank you.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. So, staff, do you all have a recommendation on where we start? I mean, what particular areas? I think there's a lot we could talk about. Where do you think we should focus our time tonight? It seems like setbacks in heights might be a good. I think that's a meaty area. Or would you recommend that we start with sort of the idea of, you know, different standards for R1A, R1B, substandard lot zones? I think that seems that, reading this report, that was sort of the vibe that I got, that, you know, staff might be thinking of that might be appropriate considering this sort of, if we all agree as a commission that we would want these to fit in into these neighborhoods sort of as they currently are, then I think that would dictate some slightly different standards in these zones.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate, especially because this is sort of the bare-bone heightened setback requirements, sort of like establishing that standard kind of feeds into everything else, like the. Like the substandard lots are all based off of what the underlying zoning requirements are. So, um, I think that's an appropriate place to start and will probably, you know, kind of lead to sort of more organically some of the other topics. So I agree that that's probably a good place to start.
So, uh, can we start there? What's the, what's the feeling from the commission on the idea of having sort of different standards for R1A, R1B, substandard lots?
Talking about the substandard?
No, R1A, R1B, and substandard.
And substandard.
Yeah. That they all might have slightly different, uh, requirements for, I believe it would just be setbacks. Height, height, I mean, oh, well, in, in substandard lots, I think you may be limited on height potentially. But for R1A, R1B, it may just be a matter of you, you would need to set back the structure a little farther to kind of conform with the plane in that location.
Right, yeah. So, um, the, the substandard lots don't have their own, um, you know, again, they, they take the underlying zoning. So it, it's all gonna be, it's not gonna change like what, what the setback in height requirements are where you start. It's just gonna apply certain rules to where you end up. And so first talking about what, you know, the underlying zoning should be in terms of setbacks and heights for accessory dwellings. I think it's a good place to start. Is that-
That makes sense, but I, I guess my question is, the way I read this is, um, you know, this analysis, I think, for R1A in particular, might say, you know, for a 25 foot height, five feet is too small. So there's not really a one size fits all for R1A and R1B. If we're, if we're using a bulk plane analysis like this as a, as a measuring stick. So I guess I can't, we can't really say we think five foot is okay for 20 foot height and 10 foot is okay for 25 foot height everywhere. You have to say, in R1A, it should be this, and R1B, it should be that.
Right, you're right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So you're looking for that kind of feedback from us?
Yeah, uh, what the, what the planning commission, yeah, thinks about. Again, because, yeah, the current proposal, uh, right, has these two options across both zoning districts. And so one of the questions is, uh, should there be different standards for, for the two?
For R1A and R1B, yeah. Uh, thoughts on that?
What does the zoning administrator think about that? As far as having, you know, kind of a lot of different, not a lot, but having different standards for each zoning district?
Uh, I don't want to speak for the zoning administrator. Uh, it is, like you said, two, two zoning districts. But I can, I can get specific comments from her. Well, we've been discussing it and she hasn't, you know, raised any concerns to me, um, about that, but, um, I can, uh, ask her for an official position maybe, or-
I think it's logical. I mean, we, you know, we only have two zoning, as you said, two single family detached essentially zoning districts. I mean, and they're different sizes. I mean, there's some, I mean, yeah, in that sense, it's relatively simple. That R1A lots are bigger and so, you know, there's, having a more, a deeper setback requirement on those lots, there's, there's some logic there. I mean, that, that, that makes sense. I do think we need to discuss, you know, and forgive me, Jack, I'm trying to follow along with what you're saying. So for, not substandard, for conforming lots, are you saying that they would, based on what you're proposing here, they would be able to follow the same rules for accessory structures? Or no? I mean, I'm, I, I, I'm trying to understand the point of the argument here. So they would or they would not have to follow the same rules as accessory, as a shed, for example? It, that, that's not the case, right? Because I don't recall that from past discussions. It would have to have a deeper setback than a shed.
Right. Um, so, yeah, the current proposal, um, has accessory, detached accessory dwellings as having, their own specific standards, which, uh, is a minimum of five foot setbacks. If you go to 20 foot, 20 feet in height, um, and if you go to 25 feet in height, that would require 10 foot setback.
So it's about the five to 20 and the-
Five to, yeah, five to 10, um, foot setbacks from the property line with height allowances of 20 to 25 feet. And what these, um, illustrations are trying to demonstrate is just how that fits in with the current regulations of other buildings.
Okay. Um, yeah, and I still think that's too tall. I mean, I'll say that right now. I think allowing that tall, that close is too much.
Which one, sorry?
I, I think allowing twen-, even 20 feet at a 10 foot setback is, is close for an accessory structure. Especially on the rear. I mean, maybe on the side, I guess, in the, you know, on the side, I guess, that may, in R1B, I guess that's, that's, you know, similar to a principal structure. So in that sense, I guess it's okay. I, I don't think we need to be more restrictive than the principal, but I, I also, I'm concerned about how tall we've proposed allowing things to go, um, you know, so close to, to the, to the, to the rear lot line or the side lot line. I think I've said that before. And another thing related to that, you know, your windows discussion. Well, I, I mean, on the one hand, I mean, I totally, I get the idea this, about this concern about windows and privacy. However, there's like an unintended consequence there. I mean, if you, someone could say, okay, fine, I'm not allowed to put windows, but now you have like a blank wall, which actually can be more obtrusive, um, to a neighbor than a wall that's broken up with windows. I mean, a lot of times, you know, we try to encourage folks to put some windows to avoid a blank wall. And we might have the, if we, if we said, okay, well, you, someone might say, okay, well, I want to go closer, so I'm not going to put any windows in on that side. And now we've kind of almost encouraged that, like, in a perverse way, even though it's not the intent. Um, so, but again, it all gets back to, you know, how tall we're allowing folks to go. I, I still think we're a little bit too generous on that, um, at that, at that height. I mean, 20 feet is very tall. You know, for an accessory structure. And are we saying we'd got, and I'm sorry, there's been a lot of new stuff tonight. Are we, what was there a max, what's the maximum height we're seeing now for?
25.
25, which-
With a 10 foot setback, which is the same as the primary.
Well, and it's limited by the primary, too. You can't go higher than the primary.
Yes, and not higher than the primary.
Yeah, I mean, and I think that's too tall. I think 25 feet is too tall, um, for an accessory structure. And like, just given this, especially in R1B, I mean, given the size of the yards that you have, the backyards in R1B, 25 feet is really tall. And that's to a midpoint. That's to a mid roof at a 25. That means the peak is gonna be like over 30. Or 30. I mean, you know, if, if they have like an attic space up there or some type of loft, which they probably would, because they're gonna try to get, it's a small footprint, so they're gonna try to get as much under roof as they can. You know, they're limited by coverage, so they're gonna want to go up, because most of the lots in R1B don't have a lot of spare, you know, lot coverage to go around. So it, I, I just think it's way too tall to have something like that. I, I know, and I, I don't know how others feel about it, but to me, 25 feet's way too tall. 20 perhaps could work in R1A. I still think that, like, where you could set it back far enough, but, um, I, I don't know. I just think to me, that's a super tall structure in someone's backyard that a lot of folks would find, you know, kind of obtrusive. And, and the R1B lots are small enough that it'd be hard to, you know, I don't know. The other thing you need to think about, too, is like the ability for folks to provide any type of screening, you know? The closer you get, the less room you have for planting. And the taller you get, the less effective any kind of fencing or planting can be. And so, you know, you're kind of, it's impossible to kind of soften the view of some of those things when you get that close. So, I don't know. So my take is like, I appreciate the analysis, but I think, you know, we're, we're talking about much larger structures than, you know, sheds. You know, and therefore, I think it, it needs a deeper setback, um, closer to what the principal is. But especially on the sides, and especially in R1B with lots that are already fairly narrow. So anyhow, that's my take on the-
Mr. Trainer, can you talk us through the, the sort of 20 foot recommendation? I think that would enable one and a half stories. Is that correct?
That's right.
And so it, can you just talk us through sort of like, from a construction standpoint, how much room you need to be able to achieve one and a half stories? Or maybe Ms. Friedlander can weigh in.
I can weigh in on that.
She might know about that.
Yeah.
Is 20 foot sort of like the minimum that you would need if you wanted to go to one and a half stories? Because I think what Mr. Krasner is proposing would really limit all of these structures to one story. I mean, potentially. I don't know if that's exactly what you're proposing, but-
Would certainly defer to the expertise of an architect, but my understanding is that, yeah, 20 feet is sort of the comfortable, um, standard to have one and a half stories. You could, you could maybe introduce a loft at, uh, 15 or 17 feet. But you're, you're obviously limiting the, the usable space up there. So if you-
And the half story just means that the usable floor area is, is half of the footprint of the, of the lot. And there's like a, I don't know if we're, it's specified. Usually it's based on like headroom. It's like, uh, as far as what we define as like usable GFA, I believe. I forget if it's like six foot, something like, like clearance or something. I don't know. There's like a, there's a, there's a number there. But, um, yeah, like I said, I'm not saying I'm, I think 20 feet could, is okay, but it needs a deeper setback. You know, in order to, I think for me to be okay with that type of tall structure.
But see, like, the, so you're talking about R1B here. I mean, that, is this the 20 foot version? I, I, I'm a little confused by the labeling. Is this the top one or the bottom?
This is 20 feet.
This is 20 feet.
And R1A.
So I, I think what this is trying to show us is, you know, when you're looking at sort of the, the, I don't know, the ratio of the height to the setback, what the staff proposal is now is in line with, you know-
But is it in line?
It is. It's in line, well-
The structure's not in line.
I don't think it is.
The structure is actually in, in, in front of that line. It's, it's exceeding that. I don't know, by a degree.
By a degree, yeah, I guess.
But it's actually exceeding it, so it's really not even meeting that line.
I think it's meeting that line closer at 15 feet when I'm looking at this. Like, just looking at the tick marks. Yeah, the tick marks along the left.
Remember for a bulk plane analysis, if you cross that diagonal, you're, you're, you're not conforming to it. If, for a bulk plane analysis, if you're, if you're-
Sure.
If, if you're not, if you're, if you're exceeding, you're exceeding the bulk plane here, because we're, look at the roof.
But by a, by a degree.
Well, but it's important. You're up on the second story.
The height, yeah, but the height of that roof, because if you have a small footprint, you are gonna try to peak that roof as much as you can, so that roof ridge is gonna go higher, right? So on a 15 foot midpoint, you can get as high as almost 20 feet to your peak ridge, which you, that gives you plenty of room in that half story, right? Because you're, you know, in that half, because we're going one and a half stories, right? Or, you know, one and a half stories max, or, you know, you've got your midpoint. But I think, I really do appreciate these, because I was, I was kind of asking for this, because I wanted a visual so that we could really kind of see, like, what's, if I'm standing on that property line, how is that gonna feel, right? So if, if you're looking at the tick marks, and I really do appreciate all the, the vertical tick marks, because those look like they're at five foot intervals. But if you look at the 15 foot interval, that is exactly where the line is kind of hitting that roof. So I feel like that is the, that's the midline that we should be going to. If we're gonna be at five foot from sep-, you know, a setback, because you're, the height of that roof can rise up to 20 feet.
The other alternative, I mean, not to interrupt, the other alternative would be to measure to the peak for an accessory structure. Why do we have to measure to the midpoint? We could be a little more restrictive and measure to the peak. You don't get any higher than that, up to your peak of your roof. Um, why, you know, I don't know. I mean, that's another way to do it. Um, is not give people the bonus of like going up beyond that and having a very steep pitch, as you see with shed dormers and stuff. Next thing you know, you have a very tall structure. But, I don't know, I mean, I just, I don't, at least of that. I mean, I think that what this analysis actually shows, the more I'm looking at it, is that we're not being consistent with the current regulations.
Right.
Ironically, right?
In R1A, I think that's the case. I would, I would disagree on R1B. I think it's, I think it's close.
I actually am in agreement with, with Mr. Krasner on this. I think that it's, it's very, um, it's really pushing the limits. And I think it needs to go down to 15 feet. If we're gonna measure to the midpoint, it needs to go down, because that's exactly where this graph is showing.
Or in, I guess, is what you're saying? I mean-
Or step it back. I mean-
By one foot.
Or step it back to 10 feet and have your 20 foot. But, but the other thing to think about, though, too, is, is this also will create shadows into the neighboring property. But in an R1A, you've got a lot more space. In an R1B, you still have some space. And you, your setbacks are, are deeper than what this is allowing. And now you're taking the sunlight out, too. So I think that overall perception, like, I, I think we really need to think about, okay, if my neighbors sold their properties to somebody who wanted to invest, or somebody who wanted to do something, what is the most egregious thing that could happen to me on all three sides, right? And that is not, this is not gonna work. Because if this happens to you on all three sides, like right now, everybody's great. Now, you know, my neighbors aren't moving. But it, I think this is too high. It doesn't allow for sunlight into anybody's backyard.
I guess at five feet. I've always, I've said from the beginning, I'm pretty sure I said that at the first meeting, I don't know what others talked. But I mean, five, five feet, I always thought was way too close for anything of that height. Anything over one story. I mean, how could we go that close to five, as a five foot setback? It's just, it's so close. You can barely get a ladder, you know, you know, without encroaching on your neighbor's property in order to do maintenance on the second, on the upper level. You know, how, how are you gonna re-site it and repaint it without having to, you know, trespass on your neighbor's property with the ladder? It's, and you can, you can't plant anything. I mean, it's too close at that height.
It's too close.
I said that from the beginning. It's my view on that one. Belaborate.
Any other, Mr. Duncan?
I'm not gonna travel into bulk plain land, because I don't live there. I mean, I guess the dilemma that I have is, is, uh, unless we come to some kind of, you know, agreement on topics like this, the worst case scenario that you outline is gonna happen anyway. I'll tell you where your neighbors are gonna go. They're gonna leave and they're gonna sell their house for a million dollars. And it's gonna get torn down and replaced with, you know, two or three of the houses like the ones that loom over me. And I really don't want that to happen everywhere. I mean, if it wants to happen in some of the bigger lots and some of the wealthier neighborhoods, that's fine. But in some of the more, what passed for middle housing neighborhoods now, like where I live, I wanna try to incentivize the market to, uh, build structures so that can turn enough of a profit that we will get some activity out of all the effort that we're expending here. And, you know, whatever the best way to that is, uh, I, I, at least on this particular point, I, I defer, I guess, to whatever the majority ends up being. But I do think that we ought to try to keep in mind what the market would say to all of what we're saying. You know, I mean, the more complicated this gets, the less likely it is, uh, gonna happen when rubber meets the road. So I would be for simplicity, however you define simplicity. And, you know, we all have our concept of aesthetics. My personal bugaboo is, you know, a lot of cars parked on the streets and crammed in the driveways. I mean, I'm, I'm concerned still that we are a tweener community. We are transit and bicycle aspiring, but we are still car dependent. And, you know, but I'm not gonna stop the train for accessory dwellings on the issue of parking, because, you know, again, looking way down the road, what I hope is that people who move into these sorts of dwellings will not have that second car. Maybe they won't even have that first car, because they're living in false shirts where you can really access most of what you need by foot or bike. And anything that you can, you can take an Uber for a reasonable price to get there. And so you don't have to bear the burden or add to the clutter of car ownership. So, um, all that is just to say that, um, I hope that we can come to some number that, that we all are more or less comfortable with on height and setback. Keeping in mind that if we don't, uh, we will be looking at blank walls next to us with 35, 40 foot houses all around us.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Uh, can we let Mr. Stevens?
Uh, just, just a, a few thoughts. Um, I mean, yeah, the bigger picture is, I, I'm still concerned that if we put, if we make this too difficult and, and put too many restrictions, then people aren't gonna build them and we're just gonna be left with what we have today, which is basically the very large houses that they're gonna build. So I, I think it's kind of a, a challenge, but one that we have to be aware of, is, is to, the, the rules have to be such that, that people, enough people feel like they can build these. Otherwise, it's just not gonna solve any, any purpose. I'm okay with the five foot setback. I, I might not have been a couple of years ago, but when I went and toured a couple of these in Arlington and I saw kind of how it worked and actually talked to a couple of the neighbors and, you know, everybody was fine with it. Especially since with the newer technology, you know, the, these older style air conditioning condensers, you know, make a lot of noise. And you could certainly see how somebody would not want that five feet from their house. But the new, the newer- But the new, the newer mini-split systems are very quiet and it, it makes it very possible to put these in. And by having a five-foot setback, you allow the homeowner to maybe dodge a couple of trees that otherwise would have to come down. So I mean, there are consequences both ways and I guess, you know, like everybody here, just trying to sort out, what is that point? And the thing I'm not quite sure on is that twenty-five feet can, does, does it still allow for a two-story unit? If you have something less than twenty-five feet, I, I just have to, I don't know. I'm very open to, you know, agreeing to a smaller, you know, height on the twenty-foot, uh, twenty-five-foot option if you can still build a two-story unit. That's it.
Thank you. And just to follow up on the, you know, the tree preservation, I think you also have to consider about, like, the surface area that you're covering. I mean, if, the more we limit the height, the more these will spread out. And that has stormwater impacts, which I know is important to many members of this commission. So, another, there's just lots of trade-offs to consider. Ms. Friedlander.
Thank you. Thank you. I, I appreciate the comment about the trees. I think that's, that there is another comment that I have on that when we get to that part of the table. But, you know, keep in mind that the canopy represents the root ball. So if your tree is in a five-foot area, it's either not a very big tree or you're, you, you have the potential to damage a root ball. I mean, during construction, we have to protect those root balls of any trees that are going to remain. And that means fencing out basically the limits beyond the canopy. So the five-foot setback isn't gonna allow any trees to be saved.
I think he was, I think he was, that's not what he meant.
Okay.
He meant, like, if you have to push it in ten feet,
Oh, okay.
there might be an existing tree in the middle of the yard that would have to come down.
You're absolutely right. You're not gonna get a tree in a five-foot space.
Okay. But my other, my other point though, too, in, you know, if you've got a twenty-foot midpoint roof, you can make that roof peak to twenty-nine feet. And a twenty-five-foot midline, that is a modest-sized house. And I would challenge somebody, and with a twenty-five-foot midline, you're gonna be rivaling a maximum height of the thirty-five foot, which is where the, you know, at the peak, which is the midline of the primary. So I would, I would challenge, what, what are we trying to accomplish by making an subordinate structure that is an accessory dwelling unit for three people to be the size of a modest-sized home, which exists all over the city? That is at twenty-five feet to the midpoint. So that, and by bringing that so close to the property line, I, I would challenge that and say, that's not a subordinate structure. That's not just accessory. I, I would even challenge a twenty-feet is, is really pushing the max of that. And I, I understand the point of wanting to save the trees within the, within the, the yards, but what you're doing to the adjacent properties in doing so, I would have to say that that's just too, it's too tall, too close. When, when those setbacks are deeper on those two lots, right? Like, you do have a ten-foot setback in some scenarios, and, but on the rear side, you've got a forty, thirty or a forty-foot setback. So I think ten feet is, is not, I think it's too close for something twenty feet to the midline. I think it's probably appropriate for fifteen foot to the midline or twenty-foot max. You can, you can certainly get, you can get a story and a half in a twenty-foot max height.
Not to the midline, is what you're saying?
Not to the midline.
Yeah. That might be something for, for staff to take a look at, you know, what, the idea of measuring to the peak of the roof. It might, I don't know, I know, I know staff, you know, the zoning department looks at the midline, so I don't know if that's possible or not, but.
Accessory structures can be treated differently. I mean, there's no reason we couldn't do it a different way. It's arbitrary. There's no law about it, like statewide, you know, you can, so we certainly could.
But I, I think it's important that these still be buildable. So can you actually get a, a story and a half? And to your question earlier, what, what are we trying to achieve? I mean, I, I think it's giving homeowners options so that they can meet their needs on their own personal property, right?
And we were talking about by right, so.
Correct. So we need to set these rules in a way that works.
And if anything exceeds that, I don't, I don't see why it can't be reviewed on a case-by-case SUP process. Because every lot is different. You're not gonna have a one-size-fits-all. But I think in order to make it simple for people to interpret, I think it, you know, and to apply it, I think if you make a, one rule across the board and then if somebody has, wants to do something different, great, let's look at an SUP process. It's not restricting somebody. We're first allowing, we're first making it, it an allowable thing for you to, to consider doing, right? So you can now, if, if this policy goes into effect, we can do accessory dwellings. It's not saying you can't do it if you're not gonna, if you're not gonna meet whatever we set as that height. But you can, I don't see why you wouldn't be able to, anything else be considered under an SUP.
I mean, you know, the other risk with the height thing is that you're gonna get people who have, like, right, you know, if you go too tall, it's like, if you have a detached garage, you're gonna, you know, it's gonna incentivize someone to then, you know, put on a tall second story to put the unit on top. Which, again, maybe it works, but maybe not. I know there's some rules about existing structures and non-conforming. I just forget, forgive me, but I forget, like, how we're proposing.
That's going to the BZI. It's an SUP.
If, if it's not conforming already, right. But if something is conforming today, we're saying, okay, you could go up. Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, I think.
It would need to go to BZI anyway, if it's a existing accessory structure that's not built to be a dwelling.
Any existing, okay, so that.
Any existing, correct?
Any existing.
Goes to BZI.
Have an existing garage, complete, hundred percent legal, conforming garage, you wanna put a second story on it now, to add an ADU, you're going to the BZI, the way we have it set up now.
Sorry, can you say that again?
You have a, you have a detached garage, it's been there for thirty years, it meets all our current rules. You wanna now come put a second story on it, so you're not adding any lot coverage, you wanna put a second story on it to add an ADU. Does that go to the BZI, the way we have it set up, or you can just do?
If it's otherwise conforming.
Yeah.
If it meets all the setbacks.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think as it's written right now, only non-conforming
Only non-conforming.
would go to the BZI. If you're otherwise conforming, then it's treated as a, a by right.
Right. So you're now, yeah, so with, so, yeah. I guess the question's like, could you do that already? I don't know. I mean, if you already have, right now for accessory structures, like for sheds and garages, you wanna have a second story on your garage, you're not putting kitchen or bathroom in there, what's our current setback for that? What's our, what's the current rule? I know it's three, we can go as close as three feet if you're under twelve. What's the next level beyond that? What's the next setback?
For, for, um, ex, for, excuse me, accessory structures.
Accessory structures. You gotta chart somewhere in here and I just.
Three feet, yeah, three feet and twelve, three-foot setback, twelve-foot height to the midline.
Now you wanna exceed twelve feet with your accessory structure. What's, what do we require now? For a garage or shed?
I'm not sure. That's, that's, I think accessory structures are capped at three, uh, twelve feet.
You can't go higher than twelve feet today?
I don't believe so.
At all? Ever?
For accessory structures.
Okay. I feel like there are some of those around town that may be not conforming.
There are. They may be.
So you, okay, I gotta double-check that. So we can't, you, you, today, you're not allowed to go higher than twelve feet, no matter how far you set back your shed?
I don't, I don't believe so. Um, I, I can double-check if there's any additional considerations, but my understanding is that, yeah, your accessory structures are capped at twelve, twelve feet to the roof, uh, midline.
Okay. So this is like all new, all right. So like, right, so we have to be careful because if we say to someone, okay, you can go up to twenty-five feet on top of your garage, I mean, you know, they might do that. And you might have a situation like on, on a lot that, where they've maxed out the lot coverage because they have a pretty huge house on it and a detached, and a garage potentially. Now you're gonna put a second story on that, add more bulk, you know. It's, yeah, I, I mean, again, it just, I think also underscores why having an appropriate setback is important. And we might be being a little too generous. I mean, I think it's, I agree it's a balancing act. I mean, I know there's some folks here who are, you know, again, what we have to be careful of, I've said this many times, you know, I said it during the T-zones. We have to be careful about somehow substituting sort of our overall, like, like ten-thousand-foot level policy ideas about what we think is good. And like, let that cloud sort of the idea of what it might, what it means on the ground, you know, when someone actually builds this. I mean, you know, I think the T-zone's taught us a tough lesson that we spent a lot of time talking about big-picture stuff, but, you know, at the end of the day, we're getting like, you know, townhouse, you know, after townhouse, after townhouse, you know. Because that's what the market wants to build. And the market has a funny way, when you make it by right with no checks on it, that it's gonna, that's where it's gonna go. So we have to be careful here about making sure that either we're really sure with these numbers, which honestly, that's part of the reason you have a special use permit process, is so that you can have a review. And, you know, if there's an issue, that it can be, you know, worked out through a process. Because, you know, if we're wrong, you know, if we kind of think, oh, yeah, five feet sounds good. You know, I mean, for the unfortunate folks who then maybe suffer the consequences about, you know, living immediately next to that, you know, it's too late. So that's the caution I would have. Like, it's, zoning's difficult. It's hard. That's why most people don't like it. It's difficult. It's boring. It's hard, but it's got really important consequences. And getting it right is admittedly very difficult. I mean, you know, trust me, I'm a professional and I don't, it's very hard to get it right off, you know, out of the gate. And so that's why having some checks and balances along the way can be very smart.
Thank you. Ms. Fried, Mr. Kavinsky, we haven't heard from you this evening.
Well, only because I think I'm gonna defer to others on the setback issue. I'm learning a lot about, from the discussion. I would highlight what I think a number of folks have already said about the simplicity of the regulation, that if we make it too complicated, we're going to disincentivize folks from wanting to build. I'm having a hard time actually picturing a twenty-five-foot midline roof in an R one B, um, uh, zoned lot. It seems that's really cramped. And potentially could overwhelm R one B. I think R one A, those are bigger lots. There are clearly, as was pointed out, there's a lot of different configurations. So you could certainly accommodate a larger roof line on an R one A. But I'm having a hard time just visualizing that size structure in a R one B lot. So those are my only points and I'm, I'm just gonna, I think, defer to others on this issue.
Thanks. Anything else on height setbacks? And we haven't discussed substandard lots yet. I think I would, we would like to do that as well, as part of this discussion.
I think we talked about gross square feet. That's, uh, which is kind of related to some of these issues.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll get to that, too. The one thousand square foot cap.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, um, in the interest of simplicity, I mean, it's come up several times that everybody thinks we should have something simple to apply. That I, I mean, what's the temperature of, of the commission to have one, apply one rule across that regardless if you're an R, R one B, R one A, that is the height and the setback? And then if you wanna do something different, it can be SUP. What is the temperature of everybody on that?
I'm not, I'm not excited about SUP because I think it carries uncertainty for the homeowner. You can invest a lot of money and come up with plans, go try, try to get your SUP and be denied. So I'd rather set appropriate rules and have them be followed and have the, this be a by-right process. That's my personal opinion. I think it's also easier to obtain financing without SUP restrictions for these kinds of projects. So there, there are a lot of reasons why I'm not super keen on sending lots of people through the SUP process. But that's my personal opinion. I don't know how others on the commission feel.
Are you, did you have a by-right process in mind? Are you saying everything would go through?
I'm thinking everything, we would set the by-right at something reasonable.
Yeah.
Which would be, I think, more restrictive than what is proposed.
Yeah, well, I think twenty-five feet is too high. But, but I think we might be able to come to agreement on one that could work for both instances. And then if it's, if somebody really has, like, a crazy lot that they need to be able to do something different, allow them the opportunity to go through that SUP process.
And that would be a one-time shot, right? That wouldn't be a three-year re-up like it is now? Is that what you have?
Oh, I, I, I hadn't thought about it that far in advance. I, I don't know. That could be up for discussion.
Yeah.
I know we're arguing for simplicity, but, I mean, we have different standards for R one A and R one B across the board in all of our zoning codes. Why would we, are you arguing, are you suggesting a, a uniform code for accessory dwellings for both R one A and R one B?
Yeah. I'm, I'm asking the question, like, why, why not?
Well, just because of, it seems proportional. I mean, if you're gonna, if something's gonna fit, say, harmoniously into the neighborhood, it, it's gonna be a different proportion for a R one A lot than from an R one B lot. You know, to have the size of the structure. Wouldn't it? I, I don't know.
They're so similar in height and setback requirements, though, for the primary structure for both of those prop, for both of those zones.
Ten-foot and fifteen-foot, that's, that's a pretty big difference.
Which one is fifteen-foot?
R one A is fifteen-foot for the primary.
Yeah, so why are we making them so close here? All right, that's good to know.
I, I would agree, Mr.
I mis, I misread, I misread the, the code. I thought they were very similar.
No. Heights, heights are the same, but in R one B, it's a ten-foot setback and in R one A, it's a fifteen-foot setback.
I see it now.
And I, I guess I would align myself with Mr. Kavinsky's comments. I mean, the, the zone, the, the code in those two districts is already different. So I don't feel like it's super onerous for a homeowner to have two slightly different requirements if that is the direction that we wanna go in.
Especially in an initial attempt to pass it.
Correct.
Pass this, yeah.
I mean, it should be easy. And I, and I, I guess I, I do, I do have some concerns about, you know, somebody in an R one A district, which is already, you know, being able to build a, a, a structure that, you know, I don't, I, I just want, I want the rules to, to enable people to build the structures that they want to build, you know, within, within, within reason. And I don't want them to be so different that, you know, you, you wouldn't be able to build something in R one B, but you would in R one A. So I, I know the idea of, like, having, you know, allowing some, like, higher heights in R one A, because those are bigger lots, but not in R one B, you know, you're, you're impacting that homeowner's ability to meet their needs on their property. And to me, that, that is a primary goal.
Okay, I wanted to ask the question. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Can we talk about substandard lots as part of this, setbacks? Can you walk us through sort of the staff thinking on that? I, I, I sort of interpreted it as, well, I'm not sure, actually. I, I, I kind of read this as, we'll just apply the rules for the primary dwelling to accessory dwellings in substandard lots. But then I wasn't, I, I mean, it would make sense to me if, if you wanna use the sort of ratio approach, whatever the underlying zoning setbacks are, you know, whatever that ratio is for the substandard lot size to the required zoning lot size, apply that same ratio to those setbacks or heights. Like, that would make sense to me. Not, not sort of like, let's apply the primary dwelling zoning requirements. So can you clarify, like, what staff is recommending here or contemplating, maybe, not recommending?
Sure. I mean, I think these numbers, and again, these are just numbers for, for illustrative purposes, show that, like, the, applying the substandard lot regulations for setback and height reductions for single-family homes to the current proposal, you know, results in, um, like, reductions of a couple of feet. But like, these are, obviously, everything's proportional to the size of the lot. But it's in the same kind of consideration as height and setback, which is, kind of consideration as height and setback, which is, um, does the commission feel, uh, that accessory dwelling should be regulated the same way, um, in substandard lots as single-family homes and other structures? Um, this is what sort of these points are showing, um, again, under the current proposal. Um, so, if, if the height and setbacks change, then obviously, the, um, the height and, uh, setback reductions would change also, at least if, if they're applied the same way.
I guess I, I have a, I have a question, I mean, I, I raised this for the rear yard, but I have the same question for the side yard. Um, I read this as, it's a minimum of seven and a half feet for the side yard. So I think we might need some clarification on that question before we weigh in on this.
Um.
The way this is written, substandard lot side yard may be reduced to not less than 20% of the lot width.
Mm-hmm.
But not to less, it like, that, to me, reads like, in no case, less than seven and a half feet.
Right.
That's the minimum.
Right.
So I think what you're saying here is, the setback is five feet, which is less than seven and a half, so that would not be permitted.
Right, if it, if it's already less than seven and a half feet. Um, yeah, yeah, right, it's, it's a good question. If, if you're applying, like, the ratio, um, would those same number, would the same, like, reduction cap apply to the accessory dwelling, um, as a principle, or would you just apply the same, um, like, equation?
I think you could apply the equation to the height, pretty easily, but the setbacks, uh, I don't, I'm not, I'm not sure. I think I, I need a little clarification on, on what, whether this is a seven-and-a-half-foot minimum and a 20-foot minimum rear yard requirement to be able to.
Yeah, I think, and these both, you know, yeah, contemplates that, like, for the five-foot setback, uh, obviously, there'd be no setback, there would not be a setback change, because you're capped at that seven-and-a-half feet, so that would apply more to the 10-foot setback requirement, where if you have a substandard lot, um, with a 40-foot-wide substandard R1A lot, uh, the reduced side setback, um, would be eight feet if you're, if you, if you're 25 feet tall with the 10-foot set, 10-foot setback allowance. So that seven-and-a-half cap would still apply to the, uh, 10-foot setback, but again, it's, it's all kind of relative to this, how, um, how much smaller the lot is than compared to the minimum lot size, because it's a ratio.
I think the ratio makes sense, I just think that seven-and-a-half feet is not a cap, but is a minimum. I think it's the opposite of.
The interpret, the zoning interpretation?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I, I just.
The, yeah, the, um.
It can't be required to be more than seven-and-a-half feet?
Right. Or, yeah, you, no, sorry, the, you can't be required to be less than seven-and-a-half feet after the reduction.
Does anybody else have the same confusion? Is it just me?
Uh, no, I'm very confused by it.
I'm sorry, I might be confusing us more.
What you're saying is that, they can't ever, they can't go closer, no matter what, to what the, the principal dwelling.
Then, seven-and-a-half feet?
Seven-and-a-half, right.
That's the minimum yard width, or side lot.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause that's how close a principal dwelling can already go on a R1B lot. R1B lots, you have to be 15, sorry, you have to be, um, 10.
10.
You can go down to seven-and-a-half.
Right.
Um, which, yeah, which folks often do. Um, but you're saying, yeah, which that is good, you can't go any closer than the regular dwelling can already go. I mean, to me, that's like, I don't know, I kind of feel like that should be kind of the standard, you should always have to be setback, um, you know, meeting the minimum setback of the principal structure. Um, that's why this whole idea about five feet, I've always thought was just too close. Um, you know, once you're, once you've met the set, the regular side yard setback, well then, you know, in my view, then like, in theory, you know, the house could have been built, you know, wherever you're talking about putting the ALU, and that could have been much taller, so, like, you know, you're still getting the kind of separation from your, whatever structure on your neighbor's property that you kind of signed up for, so to speak. Um, but by allowing them closer than that, I mean, another idea, you know, about, try to, because at some point, you know, we're gonna get down to brass tacks here, and we're gonna have to try to, if we can get to a compromise that at least four of us can support, to make a recommendation, you know, in a few weeks, not that long from now. Um, you know, another way of doing it is, you know, there's, you get to like, certain dimensions here, where enough of us agree, okay, well that's by right, but if you want to go another, like, okay, you can go up to 20 by right. With an SUP, you could go to 25, you know, like, like, that's another way to do it, that's another model of how to do these things, is that, you know, we get to like, a level of, that we're called comfortable with, that, at least as much as we can be, that, okay, with these dimensions, you should, you shouldn't have to, right, jump through any other hoops, you should be, if you meet those, you should be able to go. However, we, we want to allow, as you said, people who maybe have a specific need or desire, to go a little bit beyond that, go a little taller, or a little closer, um, for whatever reason, then allow the BZA to modify that through an SUP process, um, so that it can be looked at on a case-by-case basis, and if they meet, and standards can be written in any way that, you know, makes it as sort of easy or hard to sort of pass that test, but, um, that way, at least there's an ability to look at it, and make sure that they, you know, it's not gonna cause any undue or unexpected harm on a neighbor, on that, in that particular context. Um, so that's another way to do it. Like, I'm thinking of a way to eventually get through, you know, try to get to a point where we can agree on something, um, and that's one way that, you know, we could contemplate, is that we have like, a two-tier system. You have a by right, and then you have an ability for the BZA to modify that, and allow a little more, if you, you know, with their, with that, in exchange for the extra scrutiny, you get a little more, if you can prove you passed the test.
And your BZA process, are you assuming just, just a one-time, in other words, you don't have to go back every three years?
Yeah, well, the physical, yeah, for the physical structure, yeah, one time, yeah, yeah, you get approval to build it, you've built it, it's legal, yeah, 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 and then it can transfer, and yeah. Yeah, I know what you mean, you're talking about, like, permitting them, like, right as a.
Every three years, it was, the current regulations would require they be renewed.
That's why nobody does it, because, does that mean in three years, I might have to take this down?
No, I agree with you there. I mean, I think one thing, you know, might have to, like, a new owner might have to maybe recertify, they still meet the standards, that, you know, as far as the, we're proposing occupancy limits and other things, they still have to meet those, but yeah, they, if they can still meet those, then yeah, they wouldn't have to go back to the BZA. Because the BZA would be, in my view, the way I would, would think of it, that they'd be more involved in allowing modifications to physical, um, you know, dimensions and setbacks, um, and height, they'd be allowing those things, and those, once it's built, that's not changing, it's there. So it'd be a one-time thing, yeah, for that part of it.
I do have a, a question about the standards that you mentioned for BZA, I mean, is that something that we are weighing in on, that we are, um, how is that determined?
Well, it would go in the zoning ordinance, yeah, we, we would absolutely be able to weigh in on that, because the ordinance would want to lay out the standards for the special permit, for the special use permit, as far as how the BZA should evaluate it. You know, BZAs operate, you know, pursuant to whatever the standards and the ordinance tell them they, they need to do. But it doesn't have to be, like, an inherently, like, ambiguous, you know, murky process. I mean, yeah, it's a public process, and so, you know, you're gonna get neighbor input, and you could have opposition, if, and, you know, but it's the job of the BZA to kind of wade through that, determine legitimate concerns, based on the ordinance. If the ordinance says, you know, you know, depending how clear you are, so yeah, but short answer to your question is, yeah, that'd be something I think we could, we could suggest. Um, and we may have other standard, I don't know, we have, we have other special permits, and the ordinance, I haven't looked at those, and there may be some general standards that, you know, we could borrow from, um, you know, as for how we'd want the BZA to look at these kind of things.
Yeah, I, I just would like it to be as objective as possible. I know people have personal opinions about these, um, uses, and I want, I want homeowners to have some certainty that they will be able to achieve an SUP. So I, I personally am not in favor of, um, requiring any SUPs, I'd, I'd prefer to set the rules and have people be able to follow them, but I know staff is recommending an SUP process for R1M, um, so I just want to be really clear about, like, what is being evaluated, and how will, um, the BZA determine, I mean, and even in R1M, those are internal units only, like, are we looking at parking? Like, what are they evaluating?
Uh, yeah, I think those requirements are in, or those considerations, um, are in the zoning ordinance, and so, um, this, this, I believe, is the, uh, this section, special, where shall I take into account, proposed, uh, special characteristics, design, method of operation, effect on traffic, and the other aspects for the particular use or structure. Not adversely affect the peace, health, or safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood, be detrimental to the public welfare.
See, these feel a little subjective to me, detrimental to the public welfare, injurious to property or improvements in the neighborhood. People may have a wide variety of opinions on what is injurious to the neighborhood, depending on how you feel about these structures. And so I personally want to avoid homeowners being in a situation where they're facing a BZA that's sort of unfriendly to, uh, what we might think is a reasonable project to be built.
I mean, it's, I mean, yeah, that, that's fair, that's a fair concern. I think it's the job of the BZA to wade through that, I mean, you know, they're gonna hear a lot, just like we do, they hear a whole sort.
Their members change.
Right, right, yeah, exactly, their members change, they're appointed by council, and, you know, they hear all sorts of testimony on cases, and it's their job to apply the law. They, you know, they have a little bit of discretion, but essentially, they're bound to apply it, um, you know, but yeah, I mean, it, it, by its nature, it's gonna obviously be a little bit more uncertain than a by right process, but that's why.
And people can spend a lot of money.
Well, they can, I mean.
To get to that point.
Yeah, and that's why, yeah, you're right, to the point, yeah, to happen to design something, come up with an idea, you're, you're right. Um, I mean, you know, you could, yeah, you're right, I mean, you could argue the cost, based on, you know, compared to the cost of actually building it, it's, it's relatively small, but, um.
But if they don't achieve the SUP, then it's sunk money.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, no, I, I, yeah, I agree, I mean, I think that there's, yeah, I mean, people have options as far as, you know, doing, you know, kind of consulting with staff and others before they would proceed on that type of process. But that's why I feel like a, a two-tier system, where there's a by right option, for whatever reason, that by right option, either they don't like, doesn't work for them, um, but then it's really on them to think carefully, you know, before they would proceed down that, like, okay, here's what I'm allowed to do by right, without having to deal with any of that stuff. Like, can I, can I live with that? Is that okay? Um, and, you know, some people, a lot of people might say, yeah, that, that's all I need. Folks who say, I need a little bit of extra height, for X reason, or I need to be a little bit closer, right, because I want to save, like, a beautiful oak tree that's been there for 75 years, and I need to, I need to get away from it, and I, and I, and otherwise, my structure will be too narrow. I mean, that's like, kind of what BZAs are for, you know, to do things like that.
I agree with that, yeah, I agree with that, for those special cases, where you can't follow the rules. I just want to set the rules and give homeowners as much flexibility as possible in what they're able to build, under those rules, that we agree are reasonable.
And that's why, like, we can get to a point where, like I said, there are certain numbers and dimensions, and, you know, heights and setbacks, and square footage that we all are comfortable with, you know, at some, whatever that level is, and we do, we do give people the by right ability to go ahead and do that. It's just for like, you know, if you want to go beyond that, you know, in, in an area where maybe there's not as much agreement for us here, um, we would, you know, we might suggest that. And that's just an idea, I mean, I don't know, that, if people want to even embark on something like that, but that's just an idea of how it can be done, other jurisdictions do it that way. Um, and so it's, you know, it's, it's, it's one option that we could have. That's kind of what I'm thrown out there for.
Thank you. Um, so we, I think we were on substandard lots, um, I, I, I think we might need a little clarification on whether these are minimums. I just, I'm, like, a little confused about the interpretation, um.
Yeah, the, um, like, the seven-and-a-half feet, right, it is, um, the cap, so after the reductions apply, couldn't, the, the setback couldn't be less than seven-and-a-half feet.
Okay, but you're, but then, in the next section, you're saying that an accessory dwelling unit with a required setback of five feet would not have a setback reduction, because this would result in less than seven-and-a-half feet?
Right, be, yeah. So, because if you apply it without the cap, you would go under seven-and-a-half, so the, when you apply the reduction, you would reduce down to seven-and-a-half feet, at the most.
Down to seven-and-a-half feet, but we're saying it would be.
From 10, 10, 10-foot setback.
Okay, okay, so.
Just clarifying here, we're saying that for a standard R1A lot, the setback is 10 feet. A substandard lot, the setback is seven-and-a-half feet? Is that, did I get that right?
Well, yeah, so, yeah, right now, we're saying, um, regardless, uh, I mean, we use R1A as an example, um, but you, right now, you could have a 10-foot setback requirement in either R1A or R1B, um, but depending, again, on how much smaller the lot is compared to the minimum lot area, um, that affects the ratio of the setback. Um, and so we're saying, kind of, right now, regardless of set, regardless of, well, in this R1A example, you have a 25-foot-tall, um, accessory dwelling, that's required to be stepped back 10 feet, but when you require, uh, or, sorry, when you apply this formula, um, you, you can't be, um, any closer than seven-and-a-half feet to the lot line, and so you'd go from 10 feet to seven-and-a-half, but you would also have height reductions, and so you wouldn't be able to be 25-foot tall, um.
Yeah, I guess, uh, I mean, I feel like the setback, the setbacks would be going the other direction, perhaps.
Yeah, it seems like you're getting a better setback in a smaller lot.
Yeah, you get a better setback on a tinier lot.
Yeah.
Under this sort of interpretation, like, I think, like, okay, so, you have a substandard lot, 10-foot.
It's like you're shrinking everything.
Yeah, 10-foot, 10-foot setback is required, but maybe it should be 12 feet, because it's a smaller lot, and you can only, instead of going to 25 feet, you can only go to 21. So it's sort of, I feel like the directionality is a little confusing, um, and I still think that sort of, seven-and-a-half feet is the minimum width, not sort of the maximum. So I guess.
So you're saying that.
If I'm interpreting this right, let me, it seems like the setback, the main purpose of the setback is for the neighbors, not necessarily for the property.
It's also like, life safety, I mean, access to the, um.
But also, how close is the neighbor?
But yeah, I think you're right, yeah.
To the neighbor. It seems like the neighbors should not necessarily have a closer structure, because they happen to be living next to a substandard lot. Is that, am I interpreting that right? I mean, I, I.
That's the alternative approach to, versus what this is doing.
Yeah, I mean, the setback should be the same, and if the substandard lot can accommodate the 10-foot setback, all the better. If it can't, then, well, that's a shame.
Yeah.
Right?
So, yeah, right now, the, the regular.
I might be confused, so, sorry.
The, the substandard regulations, the, um, the, the setback reductions benefit, um, yeah, the, the property owner, and the height reductions benefit the neighbors, is a way to think about it. That's right now, but I, I think what I'm hearing is that it should be, the setbacks should benefit the neighbors, where you might require greater side setback than.
Or at least the same, I wouldn't.
Or at least the same.
I wouldn't think you would want to reduce the setback, because you happen to be living next to a smaller lot.
Right, right.
Yeah.
If, as you say, the purpose of the setback is to protect the neighbor, basically.
Right.
Yeah.
So I think the, the setbacks would be, I think, maybe the same.
The same.
As what is required in R1A and R1B, but the height.
The height would be, could be affected.
Would be affected.
By a smaller lot.
By a smaller lot, with the ratio approach, um, that we already have on the, in the zoning code. That makes sense to me, it's logical.
That's true, and if you have an option for, like, a, a different setback by right, maybe that's just what you are, are left with, based on the characteristics of your lot.
Mr. Duncan, do you have a, a thought? No?
(inaudible).
So I guess, in, in the council's first reading, I'm assuming they didn't really address substandard measures?
No.
Okay.
No, we're getting into the details.
Yeah.
One of our speakers tonight came from one of those neighborhoods, so, it's not like the council isn't aware that it's an issue, but yeah, I don't think they really bit into it.
Okay, um, so, other areas to talk about. Do we want to talk about footprint size? Staff is proposing the 1,000-square-foot cap. I know there have been some questions about gross floor area versus finished area. Have we answered those questions? Are there lingering questions?
Um, are there, I don't know, are there any on, on the commission?
I don't, I don't have any, I just know that there was.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to, I mean, Mr. Kowinski, I think, and you came across some information on Seattle that you referred to earlier there. I mean, again, you know, what are we hoping to achieve with this? Are we trying to build something for one person, whether it's granny or junior or whatever? Or are we trying to contemplate that the market at some point, or certain families at some point, might want to have, you know, the son and the daughter-in-law and the baby? And what happens if another baby comes along, you know? You probably fit them in if you had a slightly larger cottage, railroad cottages-style house. Not, you know, proportionally smaller than that, but I think those are about 1,500 square feet total with the extra bedroom upstairs. So the 1,000 number sounds like a number that, you know, a family of three certainly might be able to fit into. And, you know, are we interested in contemplating that? Or are we wanting to provide that housing opportunity through this vehicle?
Going to 1,500, is your question? Yeah. Mr. Kowinski?
So, on the issue of 1,000 square feet, I do have some comments. First of all, as a new kid on the block, let me just go on record to say that I very much support this, the whole accessory dwelling plan. And I think it gives a lot, it increases our diversity and the, and the, gives the families a lot of housing options if they choose for it. So, and I know from the Housing Commission, they fully support it also. So that's just as a preface. So the one area that I do want to address is, I think we need to take another good look at the limit on gross square feet. So the Senate bill allows for 1,500 square feet. We've constrained our proposal to 1,000 square feet. So just a few observations about that. First of all, we have a lot of different family needs in Falls Church, and I think we need to allow residents maximum flexibility for those needs. 1,000 square feet could be fine for a granny flat, for an aging parent, but it could be cost prohibitive for all but our higher-income residents. I think we need to just acknowledge that. And so it may not be the right solution for every family looking to age in place or to permit someone with a grown child with a family to move in to the lot. I think the larger square foot, at a 1,500 square foot, could help keep our smaller, older houses from becoming tear downs. You know, right now, that's the trend in Falls Church, and I think having two smaller dwellings on a lot make it, might make it more attractive to future buyers. I think we should also be thinking about our city workforce and teachers with families particularly. Right now, there are fewer and fewer small houses with yards. You know, we have, we have affordable housing options in apartments, but very few small houses with yards for city workers to live in. And having the availability of a 1,500-square-foot house in the city would, I think it would be a great recruiting tool for the school system, for city workers, and, you know, just from my perspective, folks who teach our children should have the option to live in the city. So, and I also think it would give our current homeowners a good extra source of income. I think it would be a better return on investment than a 1,000-square-foot house dwelling in the backyard if they're able to actually build a viable house such as the railroad cottages in, on their property. The second point I want to make is about citizen input, resident input. So I attended two public sessions in September, and during those sessions, the majority of those supported the higher square foot allowance. And that seems to be the case for the majority of the respondents who responded to staff questions from the two January open houses. So acknowledge, the citizen input wasn't a perfect reflection of how the city views this overall, but it does give us a sense of community sentiment. And the staff did ask the question for input, so I think we should take it into account, that the residents during those sessions said they are opting for a higher square foot, the majority, not all of them, but the majority of it. And finally, I want to get back to Mr. Duncan's question and address some of the points, Mr. Trainor, you made about industry standards. So AARP published suggested standards for state legislation and local ordinances, and they note that limits on maximum size prevent the construction of ADUs and could be, that could be home for families of three or more persons. So that's the AARP position. I did a Google search, Richmond, I know we've addressed Seattle here. Richmond allows ADs, accessory dwellings, up to one-third of the floor area of the main single-family dwelling. So if, assuming you have a 4,000-square-foot house, that could accommodate a larger than 1,000 square feet. So then, the other metric that people are using, other municipalities nationwide allow for larger accessory dwellings on larger lots, so, such as what we have in R1A. So it's proportional to lot size or proportional to the main single-family dwelling. So, and I suspect the square foot allowances that you mentioned for the older regulations in Arlington and Alexandria and Fairfax probably haven't been updated since the new requirement to look at SB 304. Those are probably old regulations, and I suspect that they're all going through the same drill that we're going through, and perhaps increasing the size of their allowable ADs. So I think there's a lot of properties in Falls Church that could accommodate a larger AD and maybe integrate harmoniously into the surrounding neighborhood. Not all the lots you can do that, but there are lots where you could, you know, integrate a larger accessory dwelling. So, anyway, my proposal is that we take a less cautious approach on square footage. And I would change the recommendation to permit maximum gross square foot to be either a percentage of the primary dwelling or a percentage of the lot size, up to 1,500 square feet, that's allowed in the Senate bill. And so I think, I think it's something we should consider. I know it hasn't been top of mind for a lot of folks in this discussion up to this point, but I'm looking forward to hearing the thoughts of others on it.
Thank you. Any thoughts, reactions? I have a few, no one else does. But, go ahead.
I think that, well, one thing I think we could probably do a little bit better on is that, I mean, I agree that the basement, you know, we shouldn't limit it to 800, 300,000 square feet if they're going to just use their entire basement. I mean, the reality is the interior accessory units are going to be the more popular ones. I mean, people like, like, they look at the pictures of the cool quaint detached ones, and there may be some of those, but the majority will be interior to someone's house. They'll be in a basement. And there's no reason why we need to restrict, like, if the basement, you know, is already 1,200 square feet, a lot of the, again, our houses are larger, the newer ones, and, you know, if we're going to, so that, I think, I'm okay with that. I mean, interior accessory units have much fewer impacts, like, all the stuff we're arguing about don't apply to the interior ones. And I mark my words, those will be the more popular kind. There'll be three of those, four of those for every one of the exterior, maybe even five to one. So, so there's no reason why we need to restrict, you know, the size. If the basement's already there and they want to use the, it's finished essentially, and they're going to now kind of add a kitchen to it, you know, it doesn't, there's really no impact if they need an extra 200 square, you know, because, yeah. So anyhow, so that's something I would recommend. For the outside, however, 1,000 square feet is probably in the ballpark, you know, on our size lots. You know, I mean, I think that you start getting, he's talking, you talk about a third of the size of the principal. Like, it's, again, it becomes a pretty large structure in the backyard. So, I don't know. I mean, I think the data you pulled from other jurisdictions, I mean, I know you tried to get some Fairfax data, so I think, you know, that data would probably be similar. Although in Fairfax, you're capped at 1,200 square feet for exterior, for detached, but you can only do it on very large lots. You know, and for the most part, people are building something less than that. So 1,000 might be a good starting point, you know, for us. So that's actually a number that staff came up with that I don't have, I personally have a major problem with that number as a, as a starting point for us. You know, I have a feeling that that would encompass the overwhelming majority of what people would want to build in their backyards, given the size of our lots, even in R1A. So, yeah, that's my take on it. But we should definitely, for interior, let folks use the whole basement if they want to use the basement. Like, I see Arlington, you know, kind of uses language like that. Fairfax, you know, we have our own version of that that Fairfax uses. But something like that, I think, that makes sense, actually.
Yeah, we might even want to pair the Arlington and Alexandria for the attached or interior units, no larger than the basement or no more than a third of the principal dwelling. Both of those seem like reasonable internal.
Also, you know, just a quick thing, I emailed other folks about this, but the Senate bill was reintroduced this year, has a new number. It's 932.
No, thank you, Mr. Krasner.
So if you're gonna, if you're gonna, like, reference it, and they tweaked it, which I exchanged some emails, not with the entire commission, but they tweaked it. So staff should take a look at that. And again, it's, no one knows if it's going to be adopted. We don't, we don't know what's going to happen. There's a lot of, there's some support, and then there are some people who are against it. You know, there are some jurisdictions in the Commonwealth that, even though they're really 100% behind ADUs as a concept, the idea of losing local control to a statewide mandate, so it's going to get opposed probably by a lot of local jurisdictions around the Commonwealth. So I don't know what's going to happen to it. But, but in any event, it's 932, and it's got some changes from last year. So.
Thank you.
Check that out.
A couple of considerations for me, I guess, is like, considering the, well, one thing we haven't talked about is whether or not we would want, and I don't think this is proposed by staff, but other jurisdictions have done this, set, you know, a footprint area. So I guess, like, the bigger the dwelling, the larger the footprint, especially if we're sort of constraining the height, or not constraining the height, depending on your perspective. So I guess I just want to know, you know, is it possible to fit 1,500 square feet? It may be related, that question, and we haven't talked about this, but could a detached AD have a basement? Is there anything that would prevent an AD from having a basement? I mean, apart from the expense of building a basement?
I don't, I don't think there's anything currently prohibiting that. I'm not sure, yeah, like, how likely or desirable that might be.
Just like in like.
How would that impact the gross square feet?
Some of those square feet in the basement.
I was about to say that. Depending on the headroom in the basement, if it's tall enough, it counts as square footage, inhabitable space. If it's like a cellar, and it's like, I forget if it's under six foot, six or.
I'm thinking of like a finished basement, like.
If it's a finished basement with a tall enough ceiling, it counts as GFA.
Yeah.
That might be something, I don't know if staff has discussed basements in these detached units, but that might be something to consider, whether that is something that we want to.
Right.
Permit, and if so, you know, what that looks like. The other, so, I guess I just wonder, like, what is buildable with sort of like the dimensional standards that we're thinking about and the sort of considering the footprint? And then I, the other, the sort of raises like some, you know, equity, equitable issues for me, like, the idea of sort of tethering the size of the AD to the size of the house, because it means people with bigger houses can build bigger ADs than somebody else. And I think you're almost kind of undermining your goal of preserving those smaller, affordable homes, like 1,600, 2,000-square-foot homes, because then those folks, you know, might be incentivized to, like, just tear down, build a big McMansion and build an AD in the back. So, I mean, that's my.
I mean, the flip side, there's the issue of being equitable. The flip side is making sure that the structure doesn't disrupt.
Yeah.
Harmony of the neighborhood and the look of the neighborhood.
And I think that's what we're, yeah, what we're trying to achieve with the heights and setbacks. But it might be kind of a difficult.
But I do think, I mean, right now, I grew up in a 1,000-square-feet place, so people can do it. But it's cramped.
It's cramped.
It is, it is a cramped living environment. And so what 1,000 square feet tends to do is emphasize granny flats, right? So, and if, and if that's our goal, but if our goal is to provide as much diverse housing for city workforce, you know, or anybody who can't necessarily get into 2046, you know, this is a way to do it. And, and, and it, I also think the return on investment for homeowners is going to be more significant for a house, you know, that's 1,500 square feet, that they can, it's an economical, it's an economic investment.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not opposed to the 1,500. I mean, that's what is recommended in the Senate bill of 932. So I wouldn't be opposed to it. I guess I just want to understand practically how it would work, and whether, you know, the dimensional standards that we're considering would allow for it.
Once we set the height, setback limits, the market will figure that out for itself, presumably, right?
So then, in that case, we wouldn't be contemplating a footprint restriction, as other jurisdictions have done.
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could do a first-floor footprint and then allow, you know, setback on the second floor, you know, or something like that.
That'd have to be a pretty big footprint to.
Lot coverage considerations too would.
And lot coverage is, yeah, natural barrier. Yeah. Is that, that's staff's, that's why you're not recommending a footprint, right? Give people flexibility to build. If they want to build a big, long, big, long rectangle house, that's okay if they have the.
If they can make it work, yeah. I mean, it's.
Yeah.
There's also a consideration of, I think, 30% of the required rear setback can't be occupied by accessory buildings. So if you have a, a, a structure that's, you know, backed up all the way to the rear lot line, then you have less room. But if you have one that's closer to the front, then you have more space to work with because you have the required setback, and then you have the extra feet. So there's other kind of lot considerations that come into play that would shape, you know, the buildable area and size.
Can you repeat that? Sorry, the rear, the rear.
The required rear setback. So.
I thought, or is it required rear lot coverage can't exceed 30%? Is that what you said? Is it accessory structure?
Accessory structures can't cover more than 30% of the required rear setback area.
Okay, that's, that hasn't been sort of included in this. I feel like that's an important consideration to include as just existing code that will help kind of regulate the size of these.
It'll help, yeah, right.
Yeah. Could you add that somewhere?
Sure, yeah.
As a reference?
Yeah.
Okay, we're at 10 o'clock. There are other, are there, and is there any other major issues? And do something else on?
I'd like to speak to the gross.
Great, please.
Please. I, just for the record, I am in support of accessory dwellings. I just want to do it in a way that promotes our comprehensive plan and keeping the residential nature of these areas intact. So in terms of setting the footprint, I think that actually starts to make it more complicated for people. I think if we allow them the greater flexibility, I really appreciated this particular set of regulations. I really appreciated this particular set of regulations, regulations that you included, because it's helpful to kind of see how Arlington dealt with it versus how Alexandria's and, and kind of how often, you know, what their percentage rate of development is. I think that's really helpful for us to understand. And I think the rate of development isn't so fast that we, we won't be able to kind of rein it in if, if something, we find something is off, right? But what I didn't like, I liked Arlington's because it does give you that idea of when it's interior and attached, I, I'm in agreement. If it's the basement, why not, right? But I, what I didn't like about it is that it doesn't allow for an attic or another, you know, in another, on another floor for that same kind of thing. So, that's why I liked the combination of, you know, in no more than one-third the principal dwelling. I think those two things go kind of hand in hand, and, and I like the way that that could be implemented for attached and interior units. For detached, however, I was looking at this, and it started getting really just too hard to follow. I mean, I can, I can follow it, but in, in looking at, and I think it's the, the tax revenue chart, I think kind of starts to speak and give us some really good guidelines to what we can expect when you start to kind of see the tax revenue that's coming in for the smaller units. And then there's, when you get to that 1,000, all of a sudden, it becomes a drag on our revenue stream.
Students.
Because of the, the other services that are, come with that. And so, I sort of think, well, you know, if, if we're going to put a drag on our own revenue, we're not here to make money off of our, off of our owners, right? But why should, I think we have to be responsible with taxpayer dollars when we're looking at this policy, to say, why would we set up a drag on our own revenue stream to benefit a few? And so, I think that this starts to really substantiate why the industry standard goes up to 900. I don't know where the Goldilocks is. It's somewhere between that 600 and under 1,000. That's the Goldilocks where, that's where you want to be in terms of tax revenue and services that are going to be provided for those units. And I think those size units would increase the diversity of living ability and livability of this city, too. So, I, I want to think about that in, in this scenario. And so, I'm, I'm in support of lowering that to be more in line with industry standard, which is capped at 900 square feet, which is elsewhere in this report.
Where's, where is it kept at 900?
Um, it's the industry standard, yeah. It's the industry standard. It's, it's stated several times throughout the staff report, where that information came from.
Maybe, Mr. Trainer, what is the, it, where did you get the reference to an industry standard of 900 square feet?
Just kind of review of materials and sort of best practices. They tend to be, you know, within the hundreds rather than four-figure sizes.
And that's what's built, or what's allowed?
Both, more so both. But, you know, we look, Seattle, we looked at, has a 1,000 square foot allowance. Fairfax has, I think, you have 1,200 with, if you have two acres to build it on.
So, and this is where, and I'm, because I, I, I looked at a lot of different cities, and Richmond, you know, allows for, depending on the size of the lot, allows for a bigger AD. Burlington, Vermont, I think, Austin, Texas, they all seem to allow the allowance. Now, I don't know if they're actually building the larger ADs, but the allowance is for larger ADs. So, I, I would, I would just be a little cautious unless, I mean, the AARP report recommended larger AD accessory dwellings. So, I'd be a little cautious about referring to it as an industry standard unless there's something published specific that's definitive.
But, I mean, at any rate, I think, I think that these values start to kind of dictate where that Goldilocks sweet spot size is, so that we're not creating a drag on our own resources, and then having to raise more taxes to cover things like that.
I hear you, but I, I mean, staff is also predicting that maybe two of these would be built a year. So, that's...
Less than 5,000?
That's not a ton of money. I mean, maybe it will be more, maybe it will be 10 times more, that would 20, you know? And, and it adds up. But I would also say, like, any single-family homeowner with two kids in the school is a drag. Definite drag. No matter how big their house is and how much taxes they're paying, they're a drag, right? And so I just, you know, from a, from a sort of, from that perspective, I don't, you know, there's nothing, just because you can afford to buy a single-family home in the city, doesn't sort of give you a pass on taxes. You know, the, the homeowner will be paying taxes on this unit.
And I, I think it's also...
I just don't think there should be different rules applied.
I think it would also be useful to understand how the tax assessment is being applied on this chart. I mean, quite frankly, we have a lot of four- and five-bedroom houses in this city, and we seem to be making ends meet in terms of our tax assessment and, you know, our ability to fund our schools and things like that, and our services. So, I, I'm not quite sure how a two-bedroom, unless the tax assessment was done wrong, how an additional two-bedroom is going to be a drag on the city when a four-bedroom house is not.
Yeah, I think it's getting to the cost, it's getting to children. I mean, right now, staff has a three-person limit. So, I guess you could have two kids, one parent and two kids, but more than likely, the average would probably be, come out to be less than two kids in these things. But I think that's what they're getting at. And I do agree that, I mean, there's, I mean, I mean, one thing I think that, you know, again, is I think we should be careful about saying what our goal is here. I mean, I think our goal is to allow some ability for people to build some small units on their property. I, I start to get nervous when we talk about that our goal is going to be, you know, anything beyond providing like a, a new housing type, maybe, that we don't have now. So, as far as like a, you know, council, I don't think has stated like a formal policy goal as far as, you know, allowing for housing for teachers or workforce housing. I mean, we haven't heard that that's what this is going to be, or that's the point of it. The reality is, it is mostly going to be for family members. I mean, that's the reality. I mean, in my experience, in how these are used, tends to be for older or disabled family members. There are some people who do rent to supplement their income, also typically empty nesters, you know, who are looking to supplement their income. Those are not the majority of these things. And so, you know, again, I mean, we, we shouldn't get too wrapped around the axle about who, you know, you know, about sort of, that there are going to be tons of families moving into these things. It's unlikely. But, and with that said, too, I think there are practical problems about allowing super-large units just from a, just from the size standpoint and the size of our rear yards, you know, compared to some of these other places. So, in any event, I don't know. I mean, I think, we'll have to, maybe we, I don't know, we'll have to see if we can come to an agreement on what size that works. I mean, staff's 1,000 with some allowance for like larger basements like other jurisdictions have done, to me, I think would encapsulate the overwhelming majority of what people would need to build. And I think it would accommodate the overwhelming majority of what people, we can't, in our ordinance, and maybe we shouldn't allow for every possible desire that someone might have. There might be someone who wants to build a, you know, a super-large structure in their rear yard, but, you know, that may not be in the best interest of the city. So, I don't know. My view is, for whatever it's worth, staff's 1,000 is, is a pretty good ballpark. That would encapsulate the overwhelming majority of these things. Anyhow, so, maybe we shouldn't argue so much about, about that, but...
Thank you. That's helpful. Any other thoughts on the size? Mr. Duncan?
Uh, sorry, I didn't realize we were sticking with the size. Before, before we, before we go, I just wanted to put a marker in on the separate address point, which you did provide us with some new information on, but I'd like to continue to understand that better. I have a, I just have a hard time contemplating in the modern world where we live, that a place doesn't have its own address for Amazon boxes to get delivered and so forth. And just as sort of a matter of transparency, you know, there's something, something that doesn't sit right with me, that a place would not have its own number on the door, emergency response and whatever. Of course, we're not the only jurisdiction that's faced this hurdle, so I'm sure others have somehow solved it. Maybe they have separate addresses, maybe they don't. The cost of the utilities thing is, that is a compelling argument. And, but there was somebody at the, at the second most recent open house who seemed to have some experience in, you know, separate metering of accessory dwelling. Anyway, there seemed to be some information out there, and I would just ask us to keep our minds open on that and get some more information, because I just, I feel like even, even granny or her daughter or whoever who's living back in the accessory unit for a variety of reasons would like to be able to fill out their tax form and say they have a separate address.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
Thanks.
Did you want to follow up, Mr. Kravinsky, or you?
Uh...
And can you speak into your mic?
Oh, sorry.
I think you're a little far away from it.
Oh, sorry. No, I, I do have a question. So, I was, and maybe I'm misunderstanding the purpose of this whole accessory dwelling. If it is, in fact, for grandparents, and that's what we're looking at, then I agree with all the restrictions that we want to put in. I'm looking at your staff presentation, the one from September, I think you, you've maintained it. So, we, it is for housing diversity and inclusivity, provides smaller, less expensive housing options than typically detached family, single-family homes, diversify housing stock, is a more inclusive and available to a range of income levels and life cycle stages. So, I, I think, unless I'm getting that wrong, I was always under the impression that this wasn't just that place for the, for your grandmother. This wasn't...
I didn't mean to imply that that's, I didn't mean to imply that it won't provide those things, but I meant to say that it, council hasn't specifically said that. And then I don't think that, I think the start of this was looking at a whole host of reasons. I'm just saying, in practice, the reality is, the overwhelming majority are for family members. But it doesn't mean that there won't be some that meet that sort of, you know, higher lofty goal of, of providing some diverse housing and some affordable rental housing. But it, that's not, that's not going to be the most common situation. Just in, in my experience in Northern Virginia, that's not what we're going to see. But, but it certainly may do some of that. I mean, there, there, you know, I'm not saying that it won't do that, and that's not to say that that's not a worthwhile reason why we're doing this. But we shouldn't get like, so, you know, I, I just saw us going down a path of arguing about sort of cost and school kids. And I was trying to actually, believe it or not, get us back away from that, because I don't think that we're going to, whatever happens here is not going to affect, you know, our school budget, you know? I mean, as compared to, you know, these large multifamily, you know, projects that have been built, that's affecting the school budget. That's why our population is increasing.
That's not really what the where students live analysis says, though, if you look at it. It's a lot of the turnover in, in single-family homes.
No, I, I know, I know. Although there are more who are living in some of those buildings than were originally estimated, which is fine. I'm not saying that's a problem or not a problem, but the point is, these ADUs are not going to be a major factor one way or the other. But yes, obviously, the larger they are, in theory, the greater potential that you might have a family or someone with a child, school-aged child, living in it. But just experience and, and practically speaking, that's probably the less likely population that will wind up inhabiting these, these units. But, yeah. So, that was really what I was trying to get at. Not that there are not other good reasons why, but, you know, we shouldn't sort of argue about school costs, because that's probably not the main negative potential here.
I do, I do think, I agree with you, that's probably the likely outcome without maybe some intervention, like policy intervention from council that might encourage homeowners to build these and, and make them affordable in the community. And so, I, I think that's a phase two project. You know, what, what can we do to actually have people, you know, help people build these and rent them out affordably? There are a lot of people, I just came from the ALP work group, and, and there are a lot of people that work, live in, that work in the community that cannot afford to live here. And it would be terrific if we could offer these kinds of options.
You could institute some policies to not just make them available, but promote them for city workforce.
Could, yeah, possibly. I think that's a, like I said, I think that's a phase two. I mean, I think homeowner, these are expensive to build, $300,000, $400,000. I mean, maybe the city, the city can borrow money a lot more cheaply than an individual homeowner. You know, maybe they can help subsidize it in exchange for them being affordable for some period of time. I don't know. I don't know what it looks like, but it's like a phase two thing. I think right now, we're really focused on what should they look like? And where can we build them? So, I have two other small things, but does anybody else have anything that they want to, Ms. Friedlander? Oh, Mr. Stevens, we haven't heard from you.
I was just going to bring up the issue of the separation on detached units in the primary. It was 10 feet. And I'm just wondering if you have any, anything to add as far as how you arrived at that number?
That's the current requirement for accessory buildings, and so, mostly to remain consistent with that. My understanding is that, I'm not sure how that 10 feet was originally established, but that's why it was proposed here, to be...
You're saying accessory structures have to be...
For accessory structures. And so, to be consistent with that existing requirement.
Right.
My understanding is that, you know, the closer you get to the building, the more fire protections come into play, which may get more expensive to build.
That's why I was wondering if, if that kind of fire safety entered into the selection of that 10-foot number. Some people have questioned, you know, how did, how did we get to 10 feet?
So, the closer you get, the more expensive. That's not necessarily a reason to say it shouldn't be. But the, but the 10 feet was to be consistent with existing regulations.
So, in theory, we could change it if we felt there was some compelling need to.
Up to a point, yeah. I mean, there are like a, some, some threshold that you can't get closer, but it's more like three or five feet, I think.
Yeah, okay.
I think that's dictated by fire separation requirements.
Ms. Friedlander, did you have another?
I did, I did. I have something else, and it's small. It's with regards to the lot coverage and the tree canopy and the impervious. I know we're not touching that, it's the same, and we're going to leave it the same. And at first, I thought, well, that's great. But the, when, when somebody doesn't trigger a grading plan because they're not disturbing 2,500 square feet, we have no way of kind of verifying whether or not the tree canopy is being maintained. So, I think it might, I'm wondering how we can encourage owners to maintain the tree canopy and like ways to encourage that within the policy, because we can't change that grading plan trigger. That's, I think that's a Commonwealth requirement, I, I think. I don't know. But I'm wondering, maybe we can think about something to, to help incentivize people to steer clear of the mature canopy and to maintain that impervious percentage, even though it's not going to be verified. I, I don't, you know, and maybe, maybe there's a way for, that starts to speak to a different problem, which, which is budget for staff to go verify, right? So, how, that's, that's my concern, is that it's, some lots are small enough where you wouldn't disturb 2,500 square feet to put in something that's got a footprint of 300 or 500 square feet.
I think I remember, Mr. Trainer, in the, in the town halls, you spoke to this, you know, the, the likelihood of what percentage of these would, would potentially disturb 2,500, because it's, it's not just the area, the footprint, it's also the sort of like access to the area that's counted. What was your...
That's right, yeah. So, like the disturbance area is defined as, yeah, not just the, the new building footprint, but it's construction staging, it's, you know, really, there's a, a whole host of act...
whole host of activity that goes into that disturbance area calculation.
Does it get triggered frequently with small accessory structures?
Yeah, I, I looked into that, and, and, you know, it's real, it's really lot-dependent and where the, the placement of the activity is.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the further back in the lot it's placed, on the, on the one hand, the more disturbance you're having because you need to get back there from the main lot.
Sure, right.
If you have, another example, if you have a, a short driveway, you need to stage the construction equipment on the lot. That counts towards your disturbance area versus if you have a longer driveway and you can just use that, then you save some disturbance area. So there's a lot of really individualized characteristics of the lot that go into it. So we looked at grading plans to try to tease out a number.
Yeah.
I wish I could say, there was some number, square footage of the floor, of the footprint, that more often than not caused that trigger. You know, I did see like, it was either, I, I think it was a 600 square foot, like shed or something I saw that did trigger that disturbance area, for instance. But then I saw smaller floor areas that didn't, for, again, maybe because they saved area on staging area or what have you. They weren't putting utilities in there. So.
Yeah.
All, all things considered, I think the short answer is going to be lot-dependent.
Yeah.
And that 2,500 square foot, yeah, applies to all accessory buildings right now. So, again, kind of making a new standard for accessory dwellings, even if it has the same stormwater impact as something that doesn't trigger a grading plan, kind of raises, you know, the same kind of equity concerns about requiring something.
Oh, I wasn't, I wasn't, I was acknowledging that we can't.
I know, I'm just putting that out there, yeah.
That I, I don't think we can change that. So what are some other things that we might be able to do to incentivize preservation of?
Well, I would go back to Mr. Stevens' comment earlier about setbacks. I mean, the further in you require somebody to set back their AD, the less, you know, the less flexibility you're giving them to preserve their trees. So I think that's a consideration.
It depends where those trees are.
I know, it does, but I'm just saying, like, if they're in the middle of the yard, yeah, I mean, there may be that the tree is, is, you know, closer within, closer to the five-foot setback, but.
I can, I can say there's lots of lots in this city that are smaller, that the trees are along the, the property setback lines, and that is the privacy between those homes. So I think it's, again, it's lot-specific. So I think if there's a way to incentivize whatever size lot you have, whatever maturity is there, I think that would be a, a great approach.
Yeah. Maybe it's a question for the city arborist, and I, I think at some point we'll have comments from the UFC, other boards and commissions on this. Is that right? Actually, that's a question, like, what, what point will, because the, the town hall was, I'm not sure exactly what happened with the town hall, but we didn't really have any boards and commission members. So has staff sent requests to boards and commissions for comment, if they have them? I don't imagine that we're planning to do staff presentations
Right.
at this point in the process, but.
At this time, we're not contemplating adding more meetings. I can certainly reach out to the liaisons. I know the Housing Commission, for instance, I've talked to the chair, sent them materials, and so they'll, they'll contemplate, you know, reviewing that on their own. And I'm sure they'll put together a memo or something. I, I think the ESC is contemplating putting together.
They are.
In official, kind of, some thoughts, you know, on, on their letterhead for the commission. So I can reach out to the Housing Commission to see if they're thinking of something similar in, in other commissions, like urban forestry.
That'd be helpful.
Urban forestry, the chair had stated that she was going to, but I didn't see it in the.
Okay.
In the correspondence yet. I thought that's where it would pop up, but I haven't seen it yet. So it might be worth.
Follow up with their, those groups and, and let them know that the Planning Commission would.
Like to hear from them.
Like to hear from them.
Yes, yeah. I have two small things, and we are approaching 10:30. I think to fit the director's report, and we might need to, and if anybody else has any remaining small items, that would be great, but to fit the director's report in, we might need to get an extra 10 minutes or 15, why don't we say 15 minutes, we don't have to do it again? Does anybody want to make a motion to extend the meeting to 10:45?
I'd like to.
Okay, motion by Mr. Krawinski, sorry. You and Danny have very similar last names. Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Duncan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll go to 10:45. Two small things for me. I just wanted to follow up on Mr. Krasner's comment about windows and, you know, sort of that requirement to not have windows could, you know, present as a blank wall. I toured some EDs in Arlington, and I don't know exactly how they put, did this in the code, but they had windows that were sort of at a height on that, on that second story where you couldn't, you could see, they, they brought light in and you could see out of them, but you, I think they were like up the stairwell. So you would go up the stairs and the windows were above the stairs, but you couldn't stand at the window and look out and down into the yard.
Clear story, clear story.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
For the vocabulary lesson. Appreciate that. So that might be an option where, you know, we would still be able to, you could still get the light into the building, and it would still have sort of like a more pleasant nature, but you wouldn't, you would still be able to maintain the privacy of the homeowner. So that might be a compromise on the window front. And Arlington, I think, requires that, so.
That was clear story, that was the.
Is that the term?
I'll go for two, is that right?
Yeah, it's, it's, well, anything above, you know, five feet, it doesn't have to be a clear story, but I think if it's above, you know, so it does allow that natural light in.
Yes. You couldn't stand at it and like look down, right? Both because the stairwell was there and also it was higher, I think, so.
Yeah, like a clear story, like up in the roof.
Yeah, you usually see them where you have like an A-frame and, you know.
Yeah.
Put some windows up at the top to let light in.
Okay.
And then my other question, kind of related to that, that I thought of, was whether we are allowing balconies or rooftop decks, or have we thought about that as a potential thing that homeowners might want to do with these structures for the detached units?
Hmm.
And if not, is that something we should think about, whether and how we might permit that?
Probably. I can consult the zoning administrator on that, and that probably is something, I can look at maybe some other examples, too, and talk to folks and, talk to our neighbors and see what they, how they do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other last questions, thoughts, Mr. Krawinski?
I'm just gonna, I'll take advantage of my newbie status to ask a question about process. So, great discussion tonight. How do we come to closure on all of these?
Well, we have a.
Is there a plan to?
We have a second, well, maybe I can defer to Mr. Trainer on, on that, but I, we have a second work session, which will be our final work session, where we will have to agree on, I think it sounds, it sounds like there's still some disagreement on heights and setbacks potentially. So we'll have to see if we can come to a compromise on that, or?
I heard heights and setbacks, I heard some questions about separate addresses.
What was the second one? Separated what?
Separate addresses.
Oh, yeah. I think there were some lingering questions, and so we're going to get some more feedback and information from staff in the interim, too, for that final work session.
The gross square feet, the three-person limit.
I didn't, we didn't really discuss the three-person limit. Does anybody have a concern about that?
I, I thought.
Mr. Duncan?
Mr. Duncan brought that up.
Sure, I mean, the example I gave of mom and dad, and they've got a two-year-old kid, and they have a baby.
Have a baby.
Are we gonna have, are we gonna kick him out on the street?
Well, I, I mean, that, that's my ques, how does a city actually enforce these occupancy limits, like, you know, in, in reality?
I think we're not gonna do that.
I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't have them, but, no, I don't think we're kicking the baby out.
All right, so.
As soon as a family of four is going to live in 800,000 square meters, they do it, just like people who have, live in an apartment that has one bedroom.
Oh, yeah.
They know a baby's on the way, and they climb in.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
I think an occupancy limit is reasonable, because the reason Mr. Trainer said, right now, our limit in the town and anywhere is eight unrelated people, which I think is not enough.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be okay with half that.
But I think that some limit, whether it's, either you live a bedroom size, or you limit occupancy, or, or, or not size, the number of bedrooms, either way, either one will have the same effect, if you want it to be an accessory unit that is small and can accommodate as many people as a principal structure. I personally, I think that's what this is supposed to be.
So just from a process perspective, just so, poor Mr. Trainer doesn't have to be reading the tea leaves, but at the next session, we're going to come to closure on all of these issues?
We're gonna try.
We, we, four of us have to agree.
Four, yeah.
We're a commission of seven, it takes four votes to do anything.
Doesn't have to be unanimous.
It doesn't have to be unanimous.
No, it doesn't have to be unanimous, but.
If you get four votes, you can.
Yeah.
Make a motion.
Although that's better.
Sometimes we're unanimous, but.
Sometimes we are.
Unanimous, I think.
Not always. It's okay, we have, we, we debate, we debate all of these detailed issues. We talk about them at length, and in the end, we may disagree, and that's okay. We're all here trying to do what's best for the community.
Yes.
Okay. Any other final thoughts on EDs? Thank you all for a really great discussion. Appreciate it. I hope this was helpful for staff and you're able to read, read the tea leaves.
I'm gonna be watching the tape, for sure.
You do a great job of that.
But, yeah, great discussion. Thanks again for all the thoughtful, thoughtful points, and we'll come back and do it again in a couple weeks.
All right, sounds, sounds like the plan. It's a date. Okay, so that takes us to item 8A, Planning Commissioners Reports. Any, anything of note, Mr. Stevens?
No, I have nothing.
Nothing today? It's only been one week since we saw you, so.
I know, nothing will come of nothing.
Okay. And so then we go to 8B, Director's Report. Mr. Fuller.
Thank you. Just to highlight what we have coming up, so we have our next meeting on February 5th. So we have the Shadow Walk, RPA waiver, Yacini Jewelers, we're still finalizing whether that'll be on. Then we have our annual report, should be ready for you for review, and then the administrative actions that we discussed tonight, on the appointments, the rules of procedure and the remote policy. We'll bring those back for action. And then the Quinn Site Plan Work Session is also scheduled. Moving on to February 19th, we have a full agenda of work sessions. We have four scheduled for that night at this point. Maple and Annandale Special Exception, CIP Work Session, Affordable Living Policy Work Session, and Accessory Dwelling Final Work Session. And so we may need to discuss that agenda. It's pretty heavy now, maybe.
I think that's a lot.
We can, we can move off the Maple and Annandale or one of the others. CIP has a very tight schedule, and then I'm, I'm not aware of the current status of the Affordable Living Policy.
If you could look into Maple and Annandale and Affordable Living Policy and the possibility of changing one or maybe both of those. I mean, we did talk through a lot of issues tonight on accessory dwellings, but I think we'll have some feedback from staff. I don't feel like we've quite gotten there on the substandard lot question, so.
Understood, yeah. I will, I will follow up on those, and I, I can report back, obviously, at the February 5th meeting how it shaped up, so.
Thank you.
On March 5th, then, we have the final public hearing on accessory dwelling scheduled, and that, you know, would lead into the City Council Work Session and their final action on it in the following weeks. And then we have the Quinn Site Plan Final Action potentially, and that's, that's on schedule as well, so. Anyway, so that's the upcoming items we have. In terms of the Director's Report, we included some informational items for you, and then, you know, one's really a discussion. But the Building Safety Quote Report, that's for October, December 2024, and then it also had some annual summaries. Quite, you know, packed with information on current development in the city. I'm not going to obviously go through it, but we shared that to you electronically, came in after our package went out on Friday, and so we wanted to share that with you more real-time than, you know, a couple weeks from now or, you know, at your next meeting. So if you look at that, you'll see for the calendar year, you know, we, we've completed 18,000 inspections, and we've issued, you know, almost 1,300 permits and, you know, almost 200 certificates of occupancy. So you can go through and, and look at the projects that are highlighted and realize that the Planning Commission on the front end, you know, had the approvals on most of these, and, and now, you know, they're, they're, you know, in construction or finalizing construction, and you can see that all over the city. And so it, there's been a lot of activity, as you can see by this report, and we'll, we'll continue to monitor this, and so, I mean, just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you.
In terms of the Planning in advance, we had talked last week about discussing the, the agenda for that at this meeting, and so we have the opportunity to do that now. I did provide some highlights of what we had contemplated for the advance, you know, discussing our division work plan. That helps provide some feedback for the operating budget and the City Council and their retreat that they usually have in the spring, as well as, you know, our, our work plan as staff, and you having a keen understanding of that. And then you also have a couple new members, and so, you know, there would be some interest in kind of seeing what's on the plate for staff. It also gives you an opportunity to indicate priorities or also items of interest that may not, you know, fit into the work plan in the immediate, you know, six, 12 months, but might be on an out basis, something that we want to have on, on a list that then, you know, moves up in, in the sequence. And so, anyway, you can see by the document provided, you know, that we talked about providing some brief highlights on a number of key planning documents and elements, and then providing some updates on some other key pieces, including, you know, comp plan status, you know, and some others. So, anyway, I'm not going to go through all of these. You know, you had the material to read in advance, so I'm going to turn it back over to you for your thoughts on what you would like to see included, and, you know, I just provided this as kind of background as to, you know, what, what we had contemplated, so, thank you.
This is great, it's very thorough. Any thoughts, feedback from the commission?
So what's our date for, do we have?
We don't have one yet, and I think, I think that, that might be something to discuss.
Set an agenda.
Okay.
And then we'll set a date.
All right. I think it's, it's embodied in several of the screens here that have splashed before us, but my interest would be in seeing what we can do as a zoning body to encourage retail businesses and other service-oriented uses in our ground floors as the council discussed, or the EDA, I guess, discussed the consultant's report that I think you may have provided to us.
We, we mentioned that at the last meeting.
Yeah.
That the Newmark Consultant talked about recommendations on additional uses on ground floor retail.
Yeah, there you go. Be nice to pull whatever is in there that seems relevant to us and use our own wits to try to encourage, whether it's daycare on the ground floor or whatever, uses that are not restaurant, because we're pretty well set for restaurants, I think, and groceries, grocery and multiple services that pharmacies, that groceries now provide. At any rate, if we can, by the middle of the year, come up with a priority list of things we'd like to encourage and see if the zoning fits in with that, that would be helpful, I think.
Great, thank you. I have that presentation that you shared with me.
Oh, great.
I was going to pass it to Mr. Duncan. Any other thoughts on the staff proposal? There are a lot of different ideas for things that we could discuss in our advance. I think you heard a specific request from Mr. Duncan.
Another one that I suggested was cottage housing, you know, the update of that.
I do think it would be helpful to have like sort of an orientation for our two newbies, too. The comprehensive plan status, I find that, we, we've had a report on that not too long ago.
Yeah, I think about six months.
Yeah, six months ago, so, but I think, I think it's helpful to, to know sort of the age of each of these chapters and what's on the horizon for update and what's being actively worked on now. That may just be, you know, a material, like, I don't know that we even need a presentation on that. I mean, it may, it may be like a bullet in a presentation.
Maybe like some, like a, something about the Gordon Road Triangle, I mean, after the.
the ULI, you know, in light of the ULI thing.
Yeah.
I think, you know, the advance is a good opportunity to actually do kind of some long-range conceptual, you know, high-level stuff about, you know, and then maybe to get out ahead of that as a commission. I think it's something that might be good. I think, you know, we've had to do a lot of sort of reacting, you know, but, you know, actually, just reading through the annual, reading through the rules of procedure, you know, there's a lot of stuff in there that was probably put in many decades ago about, you know, the commission, you know, coming up with its idea for some of those long-range planning, about having the chair meet with the mayor on a regular basis, to just make sure that our agenda is in sync with the council. But the ULI, but the Gordon Road triangle is the next sort of thing that's right in the, it's in the hopper, but it's still at a stage where it can be molded. The clay is still very much wet, and I think, you know, we have, we should, we should play a key role in that, so that might be good, too.
That's a good idea. Anything on your mind, Ms. Friedlander?
No, I think Mr. Krasner just touched on it.
Great. And you're participating, you and Mr. Stevens are participating in the ULI, top as stakeholders.
Oh, the stakeholder group.
Yeah, so thank you. You'll, you'll both be there. And I believe all of the members of the commission are invited to the readout on Friday?
That is correct.
Okay. It's at 3:30 next Friday, or this Friday? Next Friday?
Uh, it's the 31st.
A week from Friday, yeah.
Yeah.
The Hilton Garden Inn?
Yep.
Great.
Is there a, are we sending out an email on that or anything like that?
I, I shared it with the chair. Would you, would you like us to send it out again to everybody?
Oh, I can, um, yeah.
Maybe it's in my inbox.
If you could send it, because.
Sure.
Otherwise, I have to email everybody individually.
Perfect. I mean, we can do that easily, yeah. All right.
That would be great, thanks.
Send ULI.
And then I did, I did have one other question. I think there's been some discussion of mailing postcards to the community.
Mm-hmm.
About the sort of AD issue. So.
Okay.
I guess I just, curious about the content of those. Will the planning commission have any opportunity to review those cards? And I also want to make sure that they aren't just going to single-family neighborhoods, but also to people who live in multifamily buildings. I, I understand that this is an issue that is germane to single family, but, you know, per some of the discussion here tonight, it affects people throughout the community, how we approach this. So I don't, I don't think we should just be hearing from half the community on it.
Yeah, I, I, I think we've had some discussions at staff level. Maybe, maybe you should discuss it as the chair with the mayor. She had some input on it, and so we've got multiple opinions on it, and so we're gonna need some help refining that. And maybe if you could speak with her and convey your thoughts.
Sure.
As chairman of the, you know, you know, the commission. Anyway, so.
And is there any sort of timing in mind, or is this is still sort of an early idea? Do you know?
Um, no, this is, I mean, this is a, a concept that we've, you know, we're gonna end up doing a mailing, and the extent of it could be the entire city or could be some subset of it. So, you know, at this point, that's being finalized. And so I don't expect we're gonna, I mean, we'll be editing it internally, but I don't think we're gonna be vetting it with, you know, other groups.
Yeah, I know that the turnaround would allow for that.
So if you have specific comments on something you would like to see included in that, then feel free to share them with Jack and I.
Okay.
And then share them with the mayor, and then she can then discuss with city manager at that level, because that's the level of discussion that we had with staff today. You know, some, some inputs had come in on that, so.
Okay, so if anybody has thoughts on content or outreach.
Yeah.
On the postcard idea.
So I'm, I'm happy to pass those on. I, I'm not trying to, you know, you know, I'm just saying that's kind of just how it, it works in terms of us being able to, you know, inform that document.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Do you have what you need for advance?
Yeah, I mean, what I have is the, the, the retail study that was done recently, you know, probably an overview on that, and, and that informs some zoning code amendments that we would be looking at. So we can, you know, talk about what those, you know, targeted commercial enterprises were, and, and so we can give you some background on that. And then we will have the report, to some extent, in February, I think it's 60 days before it's published or whatever, but we can have the staff come and, and present that preliminary report or whatever to the planning commission.
For Gordon Road?
Uh, for Gordon Road, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the triangle.
And what was the request?
And then the other was, you know, comp plan, just a status update, but we would keep that basic. So, and then it'd probably be worth, you know, maybe I don't need to get into, you know, you know, all the documents we talked about giving you status updates, but I think on the, the city, in terms of the staff work plan, I, I think that's worth going over, especially for the, the new members. So I would, I would say that's a key element for us as well as for you. And then I think, you know, your comments and some priority thoughts on that. You know, we can move things around. Sometimes it's based on staffing or it might be other priorities. And so I, I think we, we would appreciate any thoughts. And then, you know, things that you don't see on there that should be, you know, part of future programs, it's a good time to kind of start that list. So, you know, those are, those are on our horizon for us. So that, you know, the important things for the planning commission.
Okay.
So I think, so, so we really have those four things as the list I have.
Does that include Mr. Stevens' request for cottage housing, or is that something that we can?
The cottage housing, I have that. We don't have a report, and I'm not sure I'm gonna, you know, have staff to go out and, and do the analysis and create a document at this point.
Did Carly Aubrey create a file? Because she had.
I could, I'm gonna go look, and I'm gonna see whether, you know, there was, you know, anything. I mean, it's something we could look at, and we need to do that report, so it, it could be something that gets on our list, but I'm not gonna be able to create a document and present it for the advance.
So the ground floor commercial is probably a slightly higher priority.
But, but Mr. Stevens, you know, Commissioner Stevens is correct in that there, there was to be a post-review of that and a report out, so that's a legitimate thing that, that we need to look at as a, you know, report that we, we could be working on in the future. I just would, you know, unless I have an existing one that we can share, I can't, I can't create that.
Understood.
Next month and for the advance, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask one more thing, sorry?
Oh, okay.
As we look at the Maple and Anandale plan, if it really is coming before us, do you suppose that you could work with EDO and give us an update on the rate of fill of the other multifamily buildings that are coming online, so that we have some idea what the market is telling us about the Broad and Washington founders, founders two, Alder Oak, if I've forgotten any. You know, how, how long is it gonna take those to get stabilized? And answering the inevitable question, when is too many apartments?
Yeah, okay. So we'll, yeah, EDO does a monthly report that reflects that, and so, you know, I can, I can talk to them about.
I feel like that's gonna be the first question that comes up on Maple and Anandale. That would be a good first.
Agreed, yeah. No, it's a very important question.
Okay, thanks.
All right, anything else?
That's all, thank you.
All right, well, I have my agenda then, and I will share that with you. And then we'll, we'll, I guess, pick a date.
Yes.
How about if I come back with the agenda at the next meeting?
That sounds great.
And then from there, we can pick a, a date accordingly.
That sounds great. Thank you, Mr. Fuller.
All right, no, I look forward to the opportunity to share all this material with you. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Item 8C, any correspondence? No. No, okay. All right, then I think our last item is to adjourn. Thank you all, appreciate everybody's.